Thank you. Hello, everyone, and welcome to our March 3rd Town Council meeting. Good to see everyone, and thank you for joining us. Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in Township Clerk's Office on November 16, 2020, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November 25, 2020. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Present.
Council President Mathieu Brown?
Present.
Mayor Parisi?
Present.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Mayor, would you like to introduce our first presentation, please?
Great. Thank you, Council President, for giving us the opportunity to speak with the council tonight, make this presentation. Just kind of as way of introduction, we're, as we all know in government, there's always the need to look for revenue sources, especially in New Jersey, the way government is structured in New Jersey, other than property taxes. We don't really get a lot of opportunities to raise money. So we're always looking for ways to do that, and we've been working with Pearl Media over the last couple of months, and what we think is an innovative way to create another revenue source by tying in our jitneys and the bus shelters that are around town, as well as a few other components. We think it's a very interesting approach and brings some benefits to the community, and we've, we think we put a pretty good proposal together, so I'm grateful for the opportunity to present to the council tonight. I do want to introduce Pearl Media. Josh and Jay are with us tonight, and I think Ryan Schidman is also with us. They've worked hard to come up with this presentation. I think it's innovative, speaks to their expertise and their success of doing this similar type of program all around the nation, but I'll leave it up to Josh to introduce himself, and Jay and Ryan, their company, and and to give a presentation to the council, and hopefully it's something that we're interested in talking about further. So Josh and Jay and Ryan, thank you for all your work up till now, and I turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members. We appreciate the opportunity to be here with you tonight. My name is Josh Cohen. I am the President CEO of a company called Pearl Media. We are located in Montclair, New Jersey. Sitting here is Jay Corella. Jay Corella is a partner of ours, of mine, and runs all of our sales and development efforts over at Pearl. And Ryan Schidman, I don't know, Ryan, if you can see or hear, if you want to give a brief introduction before I load into the presentation?
No, I'm, I work with Josh and the team at Pearl. I'm also a West Orange resident my entire life. I live in Luella Park right now, and I grew up on Merrywood Drive, and again, this kind of really jumped, started from the idea, speaking with the mayor over the years and the team about, hey, other way to generate media revenue, and I had done a lot of work with Pearl over the past few years, and I, you know, over the past three or four months, we just really spent, really dug in and spent some time and effort, really thinking out ways that could be a tremendous partnership with the town, and I just wanted Josh and the team to kind of present tonight, what are the possibilities?
Great, thank you. With that being said, I'm going to share my screen now. Hopefully you guys can all see this. Can everyone see the screen that is being presented? Okay. So let me just start by saying that, let me give you a little bit of introduction to kind of who Pearl Media is. As to the mayor's point, what we are presenting to you today is not something new for us. It's something that we've done throughout the country, from San Francisco to Miami, and a couple stops in between. Some on much larger scales, some on smaller scales, but the end of the day, what we are trying to propose to the township of West Orange is not only an opportunity to generate significant revenue for the, for the town, but also a new communication platform for you and your citizens to communicate, whether it's things of need, like what we've been through the past year, and communicating, whether it's emergency information, whether it's information on vaccines, traffic information, or it's just things and happenings that are going on around town that you want to bring notice to and really rally your residents around. So who is Pearl Media? So at the core of what we do, we work with landlords, developments, cities, and towns across the country to develop revenue platforms by creating unique media opportunities using real estate. That could come in the form of billboards, that could come in the form, as you see here in South Orange, on the train station behind the Sopac, the Sopac movie theater, and what we do is we come up with a very unique plan, working with the city, along with your rules and regulations, to figure out ways that we can monetize your assets by creating really clever distinctive media assets on city-owned or private citizen-owned properties to create communicated messaging, but at the same time, an opportunity to drive revenue. Combined with Pearl Media, you know, I started this business 15 years ago. Just a little quick anecdote, I grew up in West Orange. I went to Pleasantdale Elementary School, so I'm familiar with the town, and this is something that I hold a little bit dear to my heart, so I'm excited to be here today, and I'm hopeful that we can figure out a way to make something like this work. What we do, this is a zero cost to the town of West Orange. We will handle all aspects of what we're going to present to you, from not only identifying the locations, and Jay's going to walk you through a little bit about what we've been doing over the last, probably, say, eight months before coming into this presentation, to make sure that we're prepared, to identifying where we can place appropriate signage, to engineering, to permitting, fabricating, technology, handling all the service and maintenance content needs, doing all the sales, revenue collections, marketing, and obviously all the payments and collections back to the city, or to the town of West Orange. So as I mentioned in the beginning of the presentation, especially now, more than ever, the need to communicate with your citizens is more prevalent than ever before. It's just what we've all been living through for the past year plus. The need to be able to communicate up-to-date information, relevant information, whether it's, again, things to do with emergency situations, pandemic situations, traffic situations, Amber Alert situations, or just plain out things that are happening in and around town. What we're proposing gives you the opportunity to instantly communicate throughout the entire township of West Orange with all your citizens with a click of one button. We can tell that story, or we can alert someone or some people of things that are happening. The other side of this, from a revenue standpoint, is knowing the township of West Orange, the demographics are extremely attractive from a advertiser's standpoint. The, there are phenomenal businesses and residences that live within the township of West Orange that are extremely desirable from a brand standpoint, that they would love to get in touch with, and creating the right type of platform that allows brands to communicate with them, or to promote their services and businesses to them, not only on a national, regional level, but also provide a voice for your local West Orange businesses, is a significant opportunity for the township of West Orange. So what we are proposing is an all-encompassing media platform, and it starts with creating and developing unique digital signs throughout the town. We have an opportunity to work on your jitney buses, to create, to not only add what we think is, take something which is a little bit old and somewhat of an eyesore at the moment, and be a little bit creative with it, and allow a brand to sponsor it, to create, drive additional money to that service, and then the bus shelter program, which we'll get into a little bit later, but the bus shelter program can definitely use some refreshments and an opportunity to allow brands to really engage with the consumers on the street in the town of West Orange. So our approach is a little bit different than some other folks. When we look at developing signage networks inside of towns or in cities, we're not about to start plastering and placing signs anywhere and everywhere throughout the town of West Orange. Our goal is to, what we, what you'll see here is to figure out strategically placed locations that throughout the entire digital network that we're going to create, we can pretty much reach all different facets of your town to communicate with all your citizens at the same time. And that's what we've been working on over the last eight months. The idea is that the digital network, and we're going to talk about the digital signage piece first, will be a complete network signs throughout the town. We're proposing seven double-faced signs that, again, will all be networked together, and what that means is that they will all be showing the same content pretty much at the same time. So when you send out an alert, and you send it to us to go on to our content management system, it'll appear on all signs throughout the town at the same time without you having to go and create new creative, or go to specific signs and update that, the, the, the print that's on there. This is all done remotely, and we will control everything through our offices. We currently control over 400 screens around the country, and we can do that throughout the click of the button. Not only that, if and when this is accomplished, the township of West Orange will have one of the most advanced signage and communication platforms in the entire state of New Jersey. It's something that I think you guys will all be proud of, and something that'll provide you with a significant advantage when you guys are doing your planning and want to communicate with all your citizens. So I'm going to pass it to Jay to tell you a little bit about some of the locations we identified. I think it's important for you guys to understand the process that we went through and why we chose these locations, and sort of the process that happens after we kind of determine if this is the best, these are the best places for us to erect these signs.
Okay, so I worked very closely with Leonard Letaport over at the, in the zoning office, and he was nice enough to provide a tremendous amount of information and maps that I was able to go through, and using the State of New Jersey sign regulations, I found areas throughout the town where we believe that we can build structures that are placed, you know, back slightly and in, you know, in in direct view of everyone in the town that passes by them. So if you look at-
They have the city town, the township, right?
So if you look at this, you can see the smaller signs have a yellow tag on them, and the highway signs have a blue tag. So by taking all of these signs and putting, using double-faced bulletins or digital bulletins, we can show to the majority of traffic that's flowing through the town and also getting off at all of the major exits that feed the township.
Want to run a drill?
Yes, please. Okay. The first, the first location is on 280, close to Executive Drive. This location would show to traffic heading west. There would also be another sign on the opposite face showing to traffic heading east. This view, or actually, that's the opposite, east then west. And then moving back along the highway, we have one other large format location at the Valley Firehouse. It would be located behind the the Wi-Fi tower and the cell tower, right on the same property, which is already being used for secondary use. Josh, flip to the next one. Then you can see the opposite face over here. These signs are visible to traffic, but they don't infringe on the, on the highway or any properties, so they would all fit nicely into the, into the current framework. And then moving along into the town, we would put one location that would have a spectacular nature in the center of town that could be seen. We feel that the Northfield and Valley Road is a, is a good busy intersection with a lot of pedestrian traffic. In addition, we would then focus on the smaller county roads, or a little less traffic county roads, that would, you know, provide the rest of the traffic for the town, the rest of the eyes, so that they would be able to see all the messages as they go through. Keep going. This just gives you each individual smaller location.
Or on Eagle Rock.
Mount Pleasant and Eagle Rock. And then over to the Mount Pleasant Fire Station. And then I think there's, that's it.
So those are the seven proposed digital signs that we have worked with Len, as Jay mentioned. The other thing that I want to talk about, which is, I think is really important, is the technology that this provides the township. Let's just say, God forbid, there is some sort of emergency in the, in the town of West Orange. Instantly, and we will provide someone on your team, as well as our team, to have these types of controls. No matter what's going on on the signs, you can immediately take over every single digital asset with the click of a button to communicate whatever it is. If there's a fire, if there is a major traffic incident, or God forbid, it's something even worse, we can use this instantly to communicate with all of your citizens with literally the click of a button. We can have this message up within five to 10 seconds. So if you think about the power that this provides us from a communication standpoint, it's pretty unique, and it doesn't really exist in any of the surrounding towns in northern New Jersey. The other aspect of some of the quality here is, number one, is because it is digital, it provides us, it provides you with the opportunity to instantly update and change out content. There will also be light sensors on these digital billboards, so to make sure that they aren't too bright. So when it is dark, the brightness of the signs will dim. We have the ability to show different messages during different times of the day. For instance, if you wanted to promote this council meeting, we could have messaging running the full hour before the council meeting to make sure that your citizens know what's happening and they can come. We can do, everything, again, is managed remotely, so we literally, through the use of the cellphone, if we could, could change out messaging on any one of these screens with some of our remote content. And then again, the emergency notification to override all locations, I think, is something which is really important. And last but not least is our dedication to create extremely dynamic signage, which means that we will, we will procure from a technology standpoint, what we believe is the best quality LED to be able to show images in the best quality and high-definition possible within the township of West Orange. The other part of this, and again, we're looking at this as an entire all-encompassing media opportunity for brands to really engage with the citizens of West Orange. This is the current situation at your, on your citizen jitney buses. As you can see, while they are running greatly, their appearance is not the best. We feel that through the use of some creative and some great brands, we can create a sponsorship program for these buses, whether it's someone like the local hospital, or the local Verizon folks. We can instantly dress these up to make them look better. They will stick out a little bit more. I'll call something out that the windows here will be used with a perforated mesh, so you'll be able to see out of the windows, and also be able to see in when you get close, but when you're looking at it far away, it will look like one consistent image. We'll also wrap the backs, so you can see what they used to look like, or what they do look like now, and what they possibly could look like. And these are just some examples, and obviously, a lot of our brands, as well as us, will use some, we will use our creativity to make these things look even better. With the wrong way. And last is your bus shelter program. You know, we have the big billboards that, and the, and the digital aspects that give you coverage around town. We have the jitney that gives you a mobile opportunity to cover different places throughout the township. And now the bus shelters. The bus shelters kind of fit, kind of fill in all those holes through some of the inner streets and different pockets of West Orange. It really gets to your, your citizens who are on the street, whether they're waiting for a bus, whether they're heading to work, whether they're heading home or shopping, what have you. This is an opportunity to kind of really round out that entire media mix that we're proposing to the town of West Orange. Now, this is something that there's going to need, just in full transparency, we're going to need to do a little bit more digging onto what sort of capabilities some of your structures can currently hold, or if they need to be completely refurbished. Whether or not that is something that we take on, or a third party takes on, we will be your conduit and liaison to ensure that it's done properly, and it's done in the right way to make sure that it can handle the cities, the township's needs, from a transportation, shelter, environment, and communication standpoint before we add any sort of advertising on it whatsoever. So our proposal, and again, this is just, this right here is just a proposal for what we, the digital network and the buses. Again, as I mentioned in the beginning of our presentation, there is zero capital expense to the township of West Orange for this. All we ask is a little bit of time and possibly some signatures on some paperwork. But company, meaning Pearl, would pay for all the CapEx to permit engineer and build and install all these signs. We estimate that to be about $1.6 million. You guys will receive dedicated spots on all the digital signs throughout the entire town. You'll receive 15% of the net revenue until the CapEx is recouped, and then 25% post-recruitment, which we think would be approximately 24 months. We think that's probably conservative, and it'd probably be more about 18 months. We will manage all the daily content, the maintenance and service of all those locations. We will work closely with the town and working to make sure that your content is scheduled, and making sure that you guys understand how to tap in for any sort of emergency or last-minute information that needs to be released to the town, and then we're looking at a long-term lease because we want to be a partner with the town for many years to come. Just on some top numbers and what we're thinking, we think that over the next 25 years, at a minimum, with zero expenses, this should bring seven, almost seven and a half million dollars to the township of West Orange. So not only does this bring revenue, it brings technology, it brings communication, and it brings you with an opportunity to really speak to all the individuals in the town on a one-to-one basis, and communicate your needs in an extremely rapid fashion, up to the minute we can get any message you want to cross to all the citizens of West Orange. So with that being said, I will open it up to any questions. I don't know if this is the form to do so, but Ryan or Jay, if you have anything else you want to add, please feel free.
No, I think, I mean, I think as far as I'm concerned, again, you know, as a resident of the town, I think what we really, let me do my video. What we really took into a lot of consideration was both from a historical standpoint, because obviously, West Orange is a a town with an amazing history, that things wouldn't be too intrusive, or too much of an eyesore, or not go well within the town. I think Len and, actually, an entire team is really instrumental on places and sites to stay away from, and ones that would be more, let's call it, town-friendly. From a communication system, look, we can all pass the, you know, check the bulletin boards, check the networks and social, as well as pass in front of Time Hall with is that small kind of message board, but whether it's mayor's walks, or whether it's things to do with the different town activities, to be able to communicate at a touch of a button on both good news, bad news, other news, for any purposes, and to bring additional revenue to the town. I mean, as a taxpayer in the town, I know we pay a lot of money in taxes. It's a, it's something that, that is constantly brought up. This is a way to alleviate and bring in some revenue, and at the same time, when Josh and I and the team were going over this proposal, what I kept harping was this can have 0.0 cost to the town, because getting the town to contribute or write our check is just not going to happen, or at least in my history, it would be very hard to happen, so the commitment of spending seven figures plus to make this actually happen was a big decision that we had to make as a group. And that's why you see such a long-term commitment that we like to have, because it is a lot of money, a lot of time. This past eight or nine months, we've really spent already a lot of time and effort making sure that, that we did and said the right things, and went through the right processes, versus just throw something haphazardly together against the wall. And it's stuff we've done in other, in other cities around the country, so I think you have a best-in-class system with a best-in-class team, and something that, you know, could only grow from here. So we appreciate the time and effort and everybody listening, and I'm sure, I don't know how this works, but as far as opening up for questions or any comments, I think I leave that up to you guys on how to, how to handle at this point.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. I guess I will open it up to questions, and I see some, some members of the public have their hand raised. This, this is not a public comment period. The public comment period will start after the conference agenda. So I guess my question is for the mayor, I don't see if he's still on, I can't, I'm only seeing the shit screen, but Mayor, what do you foresee being, the signs being useful for in, say, areas like the 280 corridor? And information with respect to the town?
So I don't know that the signs on, the two signs to be located on 280 on town property, but showing over 280, they might not be as important for promoting the parade, or the downtown run, or street fair, or anything like that, but certainly in the event of a local emergency that's causing traffic problems, or whatever some of those emergencies might be, pending snow, you know, something like that, I think they would still be useful. Maybe not the same purpose that the signs within the township would be in terms, in terms of that, but but there's certainly circumstances where more of the emergent nature that those signs would be is, is important as the others.
And during the times, and this, this question is probably for Josh, Jay, or Ryan, during the times that we don't have information that is necessary, specific to the town activities on the 280 corridor, are those able to be sponsored as well? Is that the idea to generate?
They'll just be advertisement, yeah.
Yeah. So just to give you a little bit more perspective there, right, so the 280 signs, besides some of the benefits that the mayor just pointed out, from a sponsorship standpoint, they are the most valuable. So they will actually, having those signs enable this program to be happen, to happen. They're the anchor that supports the rest of the development, right?
I see. Okay. Do any of my council colleagues, and I don't see you all on my screen yet, so if any of my council colleagues have questions, I see Miss Councilwoman Castellino's hand up, and Councilwoman McCartney's hand up, and then I see Councilman Rutherford's hand up. So, Councilwoman Castellino?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, gentlemen. Very impressive presentation. Very exciting, something we've been talking about, especially with the jitneys for the past couple of budget cycles, so, and we're definitely in need of the revenue. Just a couple question in regards to the process. So, well, I guess the first question is for the mayor, who would manage the information that will be presented to the, the company?
So you mentioned process, and that was something, you know, wanted to bring up at some point in this conversation. Now's a good time since you brought it up. As much as Josh and Jay, Ryan, and their team did a tremendous amount of work over these last couple of months, they do this all over the country, and they, they knew going in that we just can't award contracts in New Jersey. There has to be a procurement process, so one of the things, and really ultimately, what we're asking the council for tonight, if, if this is a concept you're willing to take the next step on, we would like to issue an RFP and see what responses there are. As Josh mentioned, there are other companies that do this type thing, so we think the concept is a really good concept. We love the plan they came up with, but but we have an obligation as a public entity to properly procure it. So with the council's consent, it's not a commitment, but we would like the council's consent to take the next step and do the RFP process, and within that process, we can outline some of the, some of that criteria, but we're asking the council tonight for your support, at least taking the next step, and do an RFP process.
And thank you, Mayor, and my apologies when I meant, man, I guess I didn't present my question properly to you. I appreciate that, because that's a great question I should have asked, but my, in regards to the process, I was, if we have the company, who on your team, like, how would we get the information to the, to the screens?
Also for the emergency or announcement type thing, so that would probably be-
The advertisers.
Yeah, so, so a couple things. Obviously, in the RFP process, we would have to give some criteria to who they're selling advertising space to. We obviously would be all cognizant of who that's going to be, but in terms of the communication in the event of messaging or planned messaging, we would work that out internally with either our public information office, or the police in the event of emergency, so we're not, we're not totally concerned about that, but certainly within the RFP process, we would probably have to establish some criteria as to who we're selling advertising space to.
Okay, so we have final approval on who would go up on those billboards?
We would have to have some say and some input in that to make sure we're comfortable in who they're selling advertising space to.
And just two more quick questions. So in regards to the sign locations, where I understand Council President just got clarity on 280, what about, I'm not crazy, I'll be honest with you, of the one on Pleasant Valley Way, is there, do we have to have all those sign locations, or there's flexibility in this plan to maybe only have five, if we feel that some may be too intrusive to the neighborhood?
So we talked a lot about that. They'll tell you that we, we really wrestled with the one in the parking lot between Primavera and Fortissimo's strip mall. So no, it, it's not a must, but obviously, that impacts revenue, as you can imagine. But I do think if we stripped too many away, it would make the project not feasible, and and Pearl Media or anyone else might not even respond to the RFP, so we recognized and worked a lot, you know, there was a lot of talk about locations, and we were- And, and worked a lot, you know, there was a lot of talk about locations and we were cognizant of that. Um. And the one particularly on Pleasant Valley Way was, was, uh, was kind of one was a little sticky. So. You know, that could be flexible, but, but again, and it might ultimately impact who responds to the RFP or if anyone does. Or we can leave it in the RFP and, uh, have some discretion in the, in, if in fact the council were to make a final decision. On maybe pulling one or, you know, one out or two out or something like that. So we certainly can structure the RFP to have some flexibility. Uh, because we do recognize that some of them were maybe a little bit more residential areas and keep in mind, and. Uh, Josh talked about the flexibility of this program. If there were some in areas where. We just felt it, you know, maybe it was more residential, we could. Would lose revenue, but, but, but we had the flexibility that it has to be shut off at ten o'clock at night, doesn't, doesn't go on again until six in the morning or something like that. So it could go black. On Sundays, it could, you know, go black overnight. So, um, the, the, that would be the flexibility we would have within the program. Um, and we could also have kind of more provincial messaging. So maybe we didn't need to message on two eighty about the parade. But maybe we could have some messaging just on those Pleasant Valley Way signs for something happening in that neighborhood. Or just, you know, something else in another neighborhood. So we also have the flexibility. To have very specific messaging in a specific neighborhood, uh, as well, depending on what might be happening, but ultimately. Um, we, we talked about that, you know, maybe one of these was not going to, was not going to work and that would ultimately be, be our say.
And one last question, um, I appreciate the thoughtful answers. Um, I don't want to take too much time away from my colleagues. But, um, seven point three million over twenty five years sounds wonderful, but. Can we get a breakdown, whether you have it tonight or tomorrow? I would like to see what yours one through five would look like, yours, you know, or even go out to, to ten years. Uh, just to, you know, especially five years, I'd like to know what the immediate impact of revenue would be, uh, to us. Um, but this is all wonderful. Very excited about it. Um, I'm, I'm glad we're moving forward with, uh, these kind of proposals. And I appreciate the presentation tonight. So thank you all for coming in. Thank you, mayor, for bringing this to.
Josh might have some thoughts, Councilwoman, on some of that short term revenue.
Yeah, just back in the nap and stuff. I'm just looking at, uh, you know, just in, um, I'm looking at year five. Being almost about one point two million to the town of West Orange after five years.
But what per year? I'd like to see a yearly breakdown.
Sure. I, I, we haven't broken out. We can, we can send it to you now, or if you want it to be part of the RFP process, we can do it either way, but, um, it averages out to. You know, as the years go on to about three hundred thousand dollars a year, um, but you know, the capex we have in, uh, about twenty four months right now. So year three is probably, year three looks about two hundred and seventy five thousand and continues to grow from there. Um, gets to about three hundred and. About, uh, north of three hundred thousand dollars at the end of the year, pretty on an annual basis.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman McCartney.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, mayor, for introducing innovative ideas like this. Gentlemen, welcome to West Orange. Welcome back to West Orange. During the presentation, I was taking notes and one of the questions I had was about double face signs because when you were showing South Orange on the. You know, are there different options? The signs that you showed for West Orange did all look like the east and west that they all would be double faced? So.
There's one single face on, uh, valley.
Okay.
And then everything.
Sorry.
I was gonna say, everything else is, is a double faced and it's kind of angled slightly so it can be seen easily by traffic.
Uh, and are you recruiting the sponsors for this?
Yes.
Or is this like the program is made available?
Yes, we have a dedicated sales team that work for us that would be out there securing the sponsors for the different, uh, signs throughout the town. And just so you know, the way that we plan on selling this is that we're not going to go and start selling every single sign to everybody. The way that it works and what, where we create the most value is, as I mentioned, is networking all the signs, meaning that they all talk to each other and show the same thing. So for instance, if Verizon came and wanted to buy a spot on the signs, they would get a spot in all seven of those signs throughout the town. For the particular time that they bought. This not only creates less clutter in the town of West Orange. But also creates more value, which at the end of the day allows us to charge more money and drive more revenue.
Right. Sounds clear.
Creates more impressions. Yes.
Nice idea. Uh, and talking about that sign on Pleasant Valley Way, the first thing that I saw, what I, I didn't know if it was taking up parking spaces. So that we certainly can't afford to take up any parking spaces.
Any billboard structure would, would take less than a ten by ten plot in any area and, and we would never want to do that. We, we, the idea here is to enhance the town, not to take anything away from that. So if we move the sign a little bit to the back of that parking lot a little bit more, you know, and it didn't take a space, that's. It's totally on the table. I mean, that we can, we can adjust the proposal and the, the plotting of the locations. Still, nothing set in stone.
That, that would be important too.
Of course.
I did like the bus shelter as the council liaison to the environmental commission. I happen to like the bus shelter that showed the solar panel on it. So if we do have to modify or retrofit our bus shelters, uh, we'll, we'll move in that direction as well. Uh, we have students at the high school that are retrofitting a bus shelter to put solar panels and phone chargers. And, uh, lights on their, uh, bus shelter at the school. So we're excited about that kind of stuff.
It's cool. Great. Cool. It's a smart, it's a smart bus shelter.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. Councilman Rutherford, I see your hand up.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, mayor. Uh, gentlemen, appreciate your presentation tonight. I have a few questions. Um, one, you mentioned that the, uh, messaging can be controlled by cell phone. How do we protect against hackers?
So it's a cloud based software that is, it's similar to how all your email and everything else. There are several firewalls that are in there. It's passbook, passcode protected. There's only a certain amount of people that have it. These, these are not signs that you can go up and manually change yourself. So nobody can go up there and try to put a flash drive in or something to change that stuff. As I mentioned, you know, we do this, uh, we have hot, we. We take the security very serious with, with all of our locations. We manage major transit facilities in, in, in major cities around the country. Um, so the system that we put in, I wouldn't say is bulletproof because there are a lot of people out there who are smarter than myself. But it's pretty damn secure. I'll tell you that. And all hardware is safely locked away in the top of the, of, of the head of each of the structures. So no one can, no one can get to. Right. You'd have to literally climb up and open up the, the, it's, it's all made of, of, uh, steel and, and it's fire and windproof and everything else.
Got it. That's, um, yeah, no, that's satisfactory. I know that there isn't, uh, I know that hackers are, they try to stay ahead of the game. I know nothing is perfect, but just wanted to make sure we had some protocol to, um, make sure that that doesn't happen easily.
Yeah.
Um, you mentioned about light pollution. How do we, so can you, how do we control for that? Like, um, yeah, you know. I- if it is too bright, I, I, I understand you have a dimmer on it, but, uh, you know, these, I, I've seen them in other installations. And even at night, they seem to be pretty bright. So how do we address that?
So it, it obviously it depends on the screen that you're looking at. You know, every screen is different. They have a different pixel pitch. Which means the distance between the LEDs, the closer they are, the brighter and clearer the picture. Uh, now they create LEDs that block the light on the sides so that they don't. You know, so that basically when the board has a, a full view that comes out of it and it doesn't pollute to the sides of the board because the LEDs are blocked. So they can't project the light sideways. And then in addition, there is a, there's a light, um, spectrum. That goes out the front of the board and the, we can bring a billboard manufacturer in to testify to this, which I've done in other situations. But basically the light falls off after a certain point and they can tell you exactly when it would stop. You know, venturing forward. So roughly about three hundred to four hundred feet is when the, the light would, would stop emitting. Further into the. And then the last part of it is they have built in sensors that A, A, we can control manually, but they're also controlled automatic. So depending on the time of day and year. So obviously now as it starts getting lighter later, um, you know, we're going to make sure that the brightness is tuned accordingly. So that they aren't too bright or a, or too dark. And the last thing I would tell you, uh, council member is that. All the images and all these signs, they are not going to be moving images. They will all be static images. Which create less light pollution than a moving image. So think about like, it's going to be a static. Uh, bill, uh, advertisement or announcement going to another static versus announcement rather than seeing kind of a fifteen second commercial or, or movie clip. So, so that's going to emit significantly less light and or, you know, ambient pollution.
And, and even with all of those, uh, features, if we have, uh, complaints from residents. Um, are we able to manipulate that ourselves even, you know, with outside of your normal parameters?
Absolutely. Yeah, we can, we can dim them for sure. Right. And I mean, obviously as we build them and as we look at every site, we will make sure that they're not. You know, shooting into someone's hu- house.
Right. Um, in your revenue model, have you, um, made any accommodation for local businesses to? Uh, advertise? Is there any, are, are we able to provide incentives to local businesses, uh, to take advantage of this network?
Yes, we, the idea is that we would offer significant discounts on the ad rates to any businesses that are located within the township of West Orange. And if you want to increase that circle, we can, but I think we want to try to drive as much incentive for people to run businesses in this town versus others.
No, um, yep, we're on the same page with that. Uh, last question, um. Does the wrap on the bus pose any risk to first responders, you know, particularly police officers?
Zero. No, I mean, we do this, uh, they're, they're like the wraps that you see on the sides of buses now. Absolutely not. I mean, there are, first of all, they are, um. Uh, what's the word for it? They don't catch on fire. Oh, the fire retarder. Yes. Um, and then at the same time, they're easily, uh, can be wrecked, moved, cut, uh, punctured through. Um, so if there is, uh, God forbid, an emergency, they, they should not propose any more difficulty than the glass or the actual bus themselves. All the material that we use is the same material that's used on the MTA and the New Jersey Transit buses. The perforated material on the windows is the same as well. It, it would, it would act just like safety glass. The safety glass is already on there. We just hold the glass more if it were to break and then we'd be able to move it away. That's, that's really all it would do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmen, for those questions. Um, if we don't have any other, um, council members who would like to ask questions. Then I would like to thank, uh, the mayor for bringing, uh, uh, to echo, uh, Councilwoman McCartney's, um, words. An innovative idea on how to generate some more revenue and, um, I think we as a council can, um. Uh, all agree that that's our first, I do share responsibility and certainly look forward to that discussion. Uh, mayor, did you have, um, I know that you wanted us to come to some sort of consensus as to whether or not, A. We wanted to pursue or authorize the administration to have, um, to place an RFP. Is that something that you wanted us to discuss, um, today?
Yeah, honestly, yeah, I would. I, we don't know. They've done a lot of work and, you know, we've put some time into this already. We didn't want to. Take another step without council's consent. Again, just to be clear, doing an RFP does not commit the town to anything. We. Might get a lot of responses back. We might get none. We might get responses we don't like. So, um, but yeah, we do think this is worth exploring and. Specifically, it surrounds the jitneys. We've heard for years how we should be advertising on the jitneys and we agree with that, but we think. This was a better approach as it was more comprehensive and, um, and we do think the, um, the. Communicating with the resident component is just an added benefit to that. So, so yeah, council president, I wanted to take away from your agenda. Maybe if the council wants to talk about it later in the evening, um, but yeah, we were hoping. For either a yes or no from the council that you're supportive of, of at least RFPing the process and see what, see what we get from that.
Absolutely. I, I know we have a few matters to discuss, um, under new business. Uh, so if my council colleagues want to hold off until then. So we can discuss it amongst ourselves, um, before the evening is, um, ended and then we can respond to the mayor with, um, our position. Is that, is that for everyone?
Okay. Council President?
Yes.
Mayor, I think it's coincidental that on our agenda tonight, we have the property of Selecto Flash on Central Avenue. And our first, I believe it was our first jitney, they did the rap that looked like town employees sitting on.
Remember that.
Jitney. I remember that. So we've had experience with those, the jitney rats.
And when the council approves that project, maybe that's a site for another billboard.
Oh, there we go.
Great. Thank you, Council President. We'll, uh, we'll look forward to hearing from, uh, from the council later on and. Again, Josh, uh, Jay and Ryan, thank you for your time, uh, up until this point. And again, Council President, thank you for the time, uh, tonight as well.
Thank you.
We appreciate you giving up.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Have a great evening, everyone. Please stay safe. Bye now.
Um, okay. So moving on to, um, um, Madam Moderator, do we have, uh, Isabella? Diaz Friedman on? I know she was going to make a presentation with respect to.
I guess, um, Isabel, if you are, uh, in the audience pool, if you can, uh, raise your hand using the raise your hand function. Yes, okay. Uh, would you like me to promote her over to panelists?
Yes, please. And I just, um, for members of the public and for my council colleagues, I did have the opportunity to meet with our Green West Orange. I know some of you have already, uh, had conversations, um, in this regard for their, um, initiative of banning. Or reducing, um, the leaf blower, uh, the gas leaf blower. So I thought. Um, if we're going to have a discussion about this, then we should all have the same information. So I asked them to please come on. And they have, um, about three slides that they're going to present to us. And then this isn't a point of discussion at this time. But again, um, we can discuss it under pending matters and new business at the end of our, our, uh, agenda. Is Isabella on?
Yes, um, she just was. And then let me see what happened to her. Okay, I'm just going to ask her to start her video. And there we go. Okay. Isabel, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Okay, I'll put a slide up. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. You may proceed, Isabella, when you're ready.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for the opportunity of our Green West Orange to present a proposal. That will make our town quieter, cleaner and more environmentally just. I am Dr. Isabella Diaz Friedman. I live in West Orange for over nine years. I have a PhD in genetics, veterinary degree and a master's in science. From seven AM to seven PM on any given day during spring, summer and fall month. West Orange residents, their children and pets, as well as landscape workers around town are subject to hazards level. Of noise and air pollution due to with the spread unregulated and run restricted. Use of gas powered leaf blowers in our neighborhoods. Gas powered leaf blowers are unbearably loud. The blowers range from hundred oh two to hundred fifteen decibels. According to the World Health Organization and the US CDC, noise levels above eighty five decibels can cause permanent hearing damage. Hearing loss is the third most common chronic health condition in the US. Almost twice as many people report hearing loss. As people report diabetes or cancer. Being around too much loud noise like using a leaf blower can cause permanent hearing loss according to CDC report from two thousand seventeen. The noise pollution from gas powered leaf blowers disrupt lives and create stress. They undermine work and school productivity, especially as more people work and attend school from home due COVID pandemic. But the problem is not just the noise pollution and hearing loss. Gas powered leaf blowers pollute the air, the air we breathe. One gas powered leaf blower generates as much exhaust pollution in one hour. Then a car such like a Toyota Camry two thousand seventeen driving for one thousand and hundred miles. According to a California EPA report from two thousand twenty. Cars dispense their pollutants over long stretch of the road while blowers concentrate their pollutants in one neighborhood. According to the US EPA, the two stroke engine fuel is a gas oil mixture that is very toxic. They emit hazard air pollutants such as nitrogen, oxides, carbon monoxide and dioxide and formaldehyde. Which are pollutants that cause cancer and other serious health effects. Yes, and they are ozone forming materials. And also they liberate, uh, small particles formed by a mix of acids, metals, soil and dust. The emission of ultra fine toxic particles inhaled through the lungs contributes. inhaled through the lungs contribute to asthma, strokes, heart attacks, congestive heart failure, chronic pulmonary disease and cancer. As we all know very well now, the people most affected by COVID-19 disease are people that suffer from heart and lung conditions. And all these heart health conditions can also be caused by excessive exposure to gas powered leaf blowers fumes. Gas powered leaf blowers are then a public health hazard for West Orange residents and especially for 50% of its population, which is composed by children, senior and disabled citizens. But also it's an occupational health hazard for landscape workers, which are disproportionately minorities and subject to health risks of toxic compounds, which make grass powered leaf blowers an environmental justice problem. And we cannot forget about the environmental damage caused by those machines. They, they are major contributor to greenhouse gases. And they spent oil and gas is often discharged in down sewers. And the blow air, which can go up to 200 miles per hour, damaged soil and local ecosystem. It spreads animal feces and toxic particles like, for example, the weed killers chemicals that people put in their lawn and gardens. Next slide, please. Now, the good news, West Orange has a current noise ordinance that if enforced could help to start to tackle this problem. Our current ordinance makes it unlawful for any person to make a, any excessive loud and disturbing noise which endures in dangerous the health, comfort or safety of others. It also clears states that discharge exhaust of internal combustion engine of, of a leaf blower is not permitted without using a properly function muffler. Next slide, please. Also, another good news is that there are plenty alternatives to gas powered leaf blowers out there. In fact, the New Jersey Landscape Association President Nelson Lee favors using all electric garden equipment according to an interview that you can watch online at any time you want. And in our area, some landscaping companies are already adapting and changing their equipment to electric ones. For example, H&amp;H Landscaping Chatham and New Verden Outdoors and Mowers County are having great success with this, with the transition to electric power, electric powered gas, uh, blowers. Then our proposal is enforce our noise ordinance and requirement of mufflers in all gas powered blowers. Second, start a transition to electric mowers for commercial and residential users by fall 2021. Third, to limit blower operation from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And for one month in the spring and one month in the fall. And four, join the Quiet Community Movement. Like our neighborhood communities of Montclair, Maplewood, Millburn, Westfield, Chatham, Princeton, all have done already and as well over 400 communities across, across the country. Let's make West Orange quieter and healthier for all residents. And let's make West Orange a forward thinking community that does not wait for a state mandate that probably will be coming with the new New Jersey Master Plan to curb climate change problems. Let's start to take action and implement them before we are obligated to do so. That way, we residents as well as landscapers and its employees will have time to adapt to a better and healthier future without rushing. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Friedman. Wonderful. Um, so as, as stated previously, this is a conversation for discussion under new business with my council colleagues at the end, but I certainly appreciate you taking the time, um, to present to us. Thank you so much. Um, at this time, I know to the public, my apologies, we are running behind, um, for our public, um, portion of the meeting. Um, going to ask my council colleagues if they have any, um, council liaison, that they want, announcements that they want to share to please do so quickly. Uh, Councilwoman Castelina.
Sorry, didn't unmute quick enough. Uh, just real quick, uh, just to plug the recreation departments to promote their activities. Um, last year we weren't able to do, uh, the yearly spring fling. Uh, but this year the recreation department is hosting one, uh, Thursday, April 1st, uh, between four and eight. They will have food trucks, uh, available. And where are they this year? They are, uh, I believe at Suriano Stadium up at the high school. So the Easter Bunny will be present, uh, to safely social distance pictures with him or her. And, um, you know, come on out, uh, there'd be plenty of activities, music, uh, uh, just a good time, just, you know, safe, very safe event. They've been doing great work with a lot of safe events this year. And, uh, I know everyone is looking forward to the nice weather and to have some enjoyment. Uh, real quick with Downtown Alliance, um, we had a meeting last week and, uh, Ms. Brill and our committees have been very, uh, active. Uh, PR consultant, uh, was voted on to be hired to work with the Downtown Alliance. Um, we're also looking forward, Mr. Lepore is, uh, moving forward with the project by Supreme Bakery, uh, to improve, uh, the alleyway there from the parking lot, uh, to Main Street. So we look forward to that project, uh, coming, uh, to fruition. Thank you, Council, uh, President. Can, try to keep it short for you.
I certainly appreciate you, you understanding. Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman McCartney.
All right, I'll talk fast. So the West Orange Environmental Commission tomorrow evening at the Thomas Citizen National Historic Park will have our annual Earth Hour launch. And, uh, you know, I have been registering the town for Earth Hour for the past 10 years. And this is a global, uh, simple act of turning lights off. On the last Saturday of March, from 8:30 to 9:30, the world goes dark for non, with non-central lights with, uh, 7,000 countries participating. So tomorrow we have a lineup of speakers and due to COVID, um, Lauren Groftiza will be video recording each of our speakers for the community to see this um, on our local access channels. So, that it just sounds very different, but it will get the point across. And it's not just turning the lights out. What we'll hear tomorrow are a lot of innovative ideas, um, coming across from students and, um, locals, uh, organizations. I would like to, uh, work on a grant, a Bloomberg grant with the West Orange Arts Council and the Pedestrian Safety Commission. I had presented it last Wednesday. Because the, uh, there is a Safe Routes to School plan that just came out for Kelly Elementary. We have one for Redwood, one near the high school. And I would like the West Orange Arts Council to put out a call for artists to actually implement that plan through street art. So, um, one of the, uh, we're being encouraged, uh, to, uh, to work on this. Uh, I wanted to say on behalf of the West Orange Chamber, a thank you to everyone that registered for the West Orange Parade of Business Owners on St. Patrick's Day. Uh, it was a very nice way to virtually meet and greet our business owners. And, uh, planning board, Planning Board meets Wednesday, April 7th at 7:30. Uh, the Zoom link will be on the township website for anyone. Thank you.
And I am muted. Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. Councilman Rutherford.
Uh, yeah, I, uh, in the interest of time, I think it's okay. Um, we don't have anything earth shattering to report. Um, but our committees are meeting and doing the work that's necessary to help move West Orange forward. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Council President. I'm very quickly, just wanted to note that the Historic Preservation Commission met, uh, this month on the 10th. And they CLG grant application was timely submitted. Um, we'll take note that the Llewellyn Gate House will undergo exterior upgrades, um, which include painting, masonry, woodwork and copperwork. Um, they received a 60% matching grant, um, for $150,000 of those repairs. The total cost is $360,000. Um, St. Mark's Church renovations are having some challenges with, at the exterior brownstone walls. Uh, more information is needed. Um, there are several pending historic property designations throughout town, mostly located on Main Street, Holy Trinity Episcopal Church, Williams McManus Lehman House, uh, the Hedges Block State Diner on South Valley and the George V Hecker Carriage House at 36 Ridge Road. Also, the Pleasant Dale Chateau will undergo some improvement soon. Uh, the Historic Preservation Commission updated its website and minutes are posted on the site. The next meeting will be held on April 14th via Zoom at 7:00, PM. Also, I wanted to note that the West Orange Stop Suicide Abusiki Coalition held its first quarter meeting, um, to discuss plans to create a resource guide and a lead behind for our West Orange first responders. And also to finalize plans for the Sunday, uh, October 3rd run for ZAC to raise awareness about suicide prevention. I mean, in the interest of time, I'll just continue to, um, move forward. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. And to echo the sentiments of my council colleagues, I will, in the interest of time, um, just put it in an email or on my social media page to update everyone, uh, for those who want to read it. Madam, um, clerk, please.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 30th, 2020, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 10th, 2020. Councilwoman Castelino? Councilwoman Castelino? Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Present.
Council President Matouf Brown?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
America.
And to the republic for which it holds. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And, um, Madam Moderator, if you can instruct the public, um, for the public comment procedures and we will open public comment at this time.
Absolutely. Thank you. Uh, yes, this is the time for public comment. You do that by using the raise your hand feature located at the bottom of your screen. If you're one of our call in patrons, it is star nine. You only need to press it once. Uh, please note that you do not have to wait for anyone to finish speaking before you raise your hand. You can simply just raise your hand and it will put you right in the queue. Um, at this time, if we have, uh, uh, Joe Fagan, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Thank you. Uh, excuse me. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Uh, Joe Fagan, Public Information Officer. Uh, Council President, I have just a few brief reminders tonight. Uh, I want to, uh, advise residents, uh, for recycling, uh, that any recycling materials placed at the curb will not be picked up if the recyclables are placed in plastic bags. Please place all recyclable items in sturdy tub or containers with handles or tie newspapers with twine. Cardboard boxes should be flattened. Plastic grocery bags are not permitted in recycling because they interfere with the sorting mechanism during the separation process. The plastic grocery bags may be, uh, brought back to the supermarket for reuse or recycling there. Recycling pickup is on the first garbage collection day of each week. And please place recycling and garbage out at the curb by 6:30 AM. Uh, with the weather turning warmer as we approach spring and thoughts return to yard work, residents are reminded that leaves placed in biodegradable bags will be picked up at curbside until May 31st, but by request only. Loose leaves placed in the street will not be picked up. For further information or to request a leaf bag pickup, residents can call the Department of Public Works at 973-325-4067. And of course, that number is on our website and this information can also be found on our website and social media. And finally, uh, just a quick reminder, all municipal offices will be closed for Good Friday, April 2nd. There will still be regular trash and bulk pickup and there will also be regular jitney service. Thank you very much, Madam President. Uh, that's all I have to report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fagan.
Okay, thank you. And next we have, it's just listed as Ed. Um, so Ed, you will see a prompt on your screen. If you can push it for me and then give us your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, this is Ed Reichman. Um, I live at 12 Moore Terrace in West Orange. So, uh, I wanted to speak, um, behalf of the effort to ban or reduce the use of gas leaf blowers in town. I was involved with, uh, the effort to do so in Maplewood. I'm a recent, um, uh, resident of, to West Orange. I moved here, uh, about a year ago exactly. And, um, I work from home, uh, and I have been for several years. And I look forward to working from home, especially when the weather gets nice to working on my deck. But, um, as I found in Maplewood and as I have found a new in West Orange, it's almost impossible to do so when the weather's nice in, in the town because, uh, because of the density and because of the prevalence of the leaf blowers that are used in, in the town. There's, as, as noted, as noted earlier by the doctor, there are so many detriments to health. Uh, but there are better, healthier options, uh, for folks to use. Uh, leaf sweepers are relatively cheap. Uh, I bought mine years ago and I still use it. There's also mulching mowers. It's healthier for your lawn. And I mean, if you, if you really care about having a nice green lawn, it's healthier for your lawn to mulch the leaves. It's better for the environment. Um, and just leave the, the compost on your lawn and it's, it helps to fertilize the lawn. The two-stage motors that are used, uh, typically in gas leaf blowers, uh, aside from the fact that they don't have anything to, um, absorb the particulates that are, that come out of two-stage, engines. They also don't typically have no muffler features, which, uh, according to the noise ordinance, um, they should have because they're, they, uh, on a, on a typical basis, they are always exceeding, uh, the noise ordinances in town, which I guess are rarely enforced. Um, or would be almost impossible to enforce given the prevalence of the leaf blower, leaf, uh, I guess, leaf blowers. Um, another thing to point out is that in Maplewood, um, there was a study that was done by Harvard that found that the, the sound of a gas leaf blower remains higher than the WHO, uh, World Health Organization out toward daytime standard of 55 decibels out to 800 feet from the point of operation. So in Maplewood and that, that's an 800 foot radius. Um, and it's typically covers about 100 homes. In the area of West Orange that I live in, the homes are even in a more dense, uh, array than they are in Maplewood. Uh, so it easily passes over 100 homes in my part of town. Um, so you can't, uh, avoid even one gas leaf blower makes it to every single house and affects every single home within that 800 foot radius. Um, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Sally Malanga. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Sally Malanga, 57 Ridge Road.
Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to speak about the gas powered leaf blowers also, but first I wanted to comment on the proposed billboard plan. I'm hoping that the town council will solicit the opinions of residents on this proposal. While I don't object to jitney wraps, I do object to having 40-foot digital billboards, Blair. I do object to having 40-foot digital billboards Blair advertising at residents. I don't consider it necessary as an information source for township activities as we have other channels of information that function perfectly well. And I consider the money, while pleasant, minimal to trade away the visual appeal of our town and the distraction on Route 280 with large billboards. I want to point out also that Essex Green had proposed a 40-foot billboard, which could be seen from many areas of the town and also out on Route 280, and due to public opposition, it was withdrawn. So I hope that you will solicit the opinions of the residents before moving forward on such a permanent structural change to our town. Now regarding the gas leaf blowers, I would like to mention that I thank you so much for considering our proposals. I think that once we brought this to your attention, everyone's had an experience that's very unpleasant with these gas-powered tools. For over three years, I have not allowed them to be used at my house, and I live on over two acres. We mulch the leaves into the lawn and we leave the leaves in the beds for the pollinators. Our landscaper uses quieter electric tools when he has to, and consequently, the landscapers are in and out of our property much faster because of this. But at our neighbors' houses, it's hours of blowing noise and fumes with ancient equipment. And we know that once our lungs are impacted by the dust and fumes of these overpowered machines, we are much more susceptible to asthma and other lung diseases with most likely a very poor outcome from COVID. If someone catches that, it will wreak havoc on already damaged lungs. It's been said by some that the landscape business owners should not be burdened by our requests for them to go electric. But is our request to move on from this ancient fossil fuel technology a burden or a boon to them? So for the workers, strapping a gas tank on their back and breathing in fumes and noise all day is like putting a bomb on their backs. To them, going electric and leaving leaves in the beds is a lifesaver. It's a boon. For residents, many who are physically and emotionally harmed by this, by the air being poisoned and the insects killed, going electric and using better methods is a boon. Now, is it a burden or a boon for the landscape owners? As Ms. Friedman mentioned, the president of the Landscapers Association of New Jersey, Nelson Lee, enthusiastically promoted battery-powered lawn care. And one of his quotes that I read in an article, "To put a battery in and pull a trigger on a weed whacker and have it work instantaneously is amazing." And if the landscapers can get over the hurdle of the initial investment and they actually start using it, they'll see the benefit within three months, and they'll wonder why they didn't switch to battery from that point forward. So it seems that once the landscapers adapt, it's a boon to them too. So in conclusion, my request to you is, would you please inform West Orange residents that landscapers must use mufflers as required by the ordinance? And until then, if residents and landscapers violate the ordinance, the police will have to issue a $500 summons in accordance with the ordinance. Then it would be great if by the fall of this year would benefit all parties if the fumes stopped when this council would ban the gas-powered versions. And I have to say that our Green West Orange members will promote any landscaper that goes electric, so they will get more business. So it seems that the best solution is to go electric, leave the leaves in the beds, save time, save money, and the health of the workers and the residents, and it's a win-win for all. So we want to encourage cooperation in advance.
Your time is up.
And thank you in advance for taking action.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Kabira Myers. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Kabira Myers of Marion Drive in West Orange. Thank you for this opportunity. First and foremost, I would like to endorse and request the speedy passage of Resolution 57-21 in support of the Medicare for All Act of 2021, which was just introduced in the Congress on the... Or last week, I believe, on the 16th. Healthcare, let me start off by saying, as I've said before publicly, healthcare is a human right. With the historic un- and underemployment rates related to COVID, guaranteed healthcare that is not tied to employment makes sense. A national health insurance program will help to address the egregious inequities in our healthcare system that disparately hurts Black and Brown people. In August of last year, the Township of Maplewood passed a Medicare for All resolution. Similarly, in September of last year, the Essex County Commissioners passed a Medicare for All resolution. The time is ripe and well overdue for West Orange to endorse and pass a resolution in support of Medicare for All. Separately, I'd like to bring the town's attention to the fact that Lieutenant Governor Sheila Oliver, as well as Attorney General Gabeir Graywall, will be presenting a Tenants' Rights Town Hall on Tuesday, March 30, at 6:00 PM. The flyer for that Tenants' Rights Town Hall can be found on the Township's Rent Leveling Board webpage, which is found on the Township's website. Please, if you're interested in attending, which I hope everyone is, you must click on the link to register to attend. Thank you for your time, Town Council. Have a great day and have a great evening.
Thank you, Ms. Myers.
Thank you. And next, we have Justin Goldsman. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Justin Goldsman, 14 Moran Road, West Orange, New Jersey. I'm the Chair of Our Evolution Essex County, representing 2,500 Essex County members and 300 West Orange residents. Last year, on February 4, on World Cancer Day, I presented this resolution, although amended to reflect the new bill that has been introduced. That resolution failed. I was disappointed. One month after this resolution was presented before the council, and when four out of the five on the current council received this package in the meeting, the only exception there was Councilman Rutherford. Not because of anything. You weren't a council member. We saw COVID happen. We saw hundreds in our town die. Businesses closed, nearly 550,000 Americans die, lose their jobs, and thus their healthcare. And somehow, we're still debating this resolution to support Medicare for All. Employer-based healthcare is not healthcare. It is a piece of plastic that charges you outrageous prices, limits your ability to see a doctor as you figure out which networks are applicable, and is unsustainable. Our system currently is, you lose your job, you die. Your employer changes your plan, now you can't see your doctor anymore. Medicare for All provides racial and gender equity, reproductive and mental healthcare, dental vision and hearing aids. It provides addiction services. We've seen addiction skyrocket during this pandemic. It provides stability. We also saw movements all year for justice for women, for people of color, that were righteous and absolutely needed. Dr. King said, "Of all the forms of inequality, injustice in healthcare is the most shocking and inhumane. How can we uplift justice for communities and then prop up a system that systematically deprives people of access to life-saving care that they need? If we value life, we value access to care. Policy change is what we need, because that's what impacts lives, not fancy hashtags and not rhetoric. For-profit healthcare is greedy and dangerous and predatory, and for our democracy and for our citizens, it is dangerous. We need Medicare for All and universal healthcare coverage. We are the only country in the world in which the term medical bankruptcy exists. New Jersey has some of the worst national healthcare outcomes when it comes to race, reproductive, and maternal care. We had 670,000 people in New Jersey without healthcare before COVID, and 72% were people of color. We have 80 million Americans without insurance or access to care. It improves wages for workers when they don't need to bargain for healthcare, and it will save the town money not doing that either. You literally bargained as a council for four years over healthcare with one union, and another still has no contract. Do you want to spend that time elsewhere? You also have no predictability in budgeting years out of the town when the healthcare prices change. You just referenced that you like having year-to-year cost allocations. How do you plan to tell me what the price of healthcare will be in five years when we don't have any national restrictions on that? In fact, in the 2019 Budget Line Item 15, there was a request for 45% increase in the retiree health benefit for claims, almost nearly ending a million-dollar financial expenditure. You don't want a million dollars back in town. And I also say this as someone whose job entitles reading every piece of legislation that gets voted on in Trenton, every single bill. So please, while I'm here in a personal capacity, if anyone knows wonky policy details about benefits and payments and healthcare, hi, meet me. This resolution seems better policy to me and cover more people with better coverage for less national money and less time spent with uncertain and expensive budgets. What else do you want? A new report from Public Citizens shows how much different COVID would have been with Medicare for All. Employers with fewer than 10 employees face premiums nearly 20% higher for the same benefits than those paid by large businesses. And employers with 10 to 25 employees can expect to pay around 10% more. A recent study found that 1/3 of COVID-19 deaths and around 40% of infections are linked to a lack of healthcare insurance. For every 10% increase in the county's uninsured rate, this researcher's found that 70% increase in COVID deaths and 50% in COVID infections. That's what the package that you got a year ago on when I gave them to you. Some of the questions you asked were, "Why don't unions support this?" This past weekend, Medicare for All was introduced. The majority of House Democrats signed on. The majority of American citizens signed on regardless of party. Tell me why Congressman Payne, who represents West Orange, is wrong for supporting this bill. Tell me why Congresswoman Bonnie Watson Coleman and Congressman Polone are wrong. Why are the majority of House Democrats wrong? Why are the majority of Democrats, independents, and Republican voters wrong? Last year, we were told this was a partisan issue. Last time I checked, healthcare impacts everybody. We also saw this resolution pact in Dover, Maplewood, Red Bank, and the entire county of Essex. Please tell me why those communities are wrong. But you know what? The unions signed on, the Amalgamated Transunions, the National Education Association, the SEIU, the American Federation of Flight Attendants CWA, the American Federation of Teachers. Please tell me why we claim these people are essential workers and then we don't want to do anything to give them healthcare. Businesses expand when you don't need to pay worker healthcare. You can afford to leave your job and start a small business because you don't have to worry about how you get healthcare. You could see incredible economic growth, something everyone in this council, I believe, supports and talks about all the time. So let's make that a better reality. Frankly, the Chamber of Commerce should love this bill if they truly care about creating small businesses when we've seen so many close. You can start new businesses or not be afraid to lose your care if your business closes. This is a worker, racial justice, small business, fiscal responsible, gender healthcare issue, and this is quite frankly, a moral issue. Stand with the majority of Americans. Be nonpartisan. Because this is a nonpartisan issue. Support the Medicare for All Act of 2021. I'm sick and tired of being sick, and quite frankly, I am tired of others being sick as well. Because the time is now to guarantee healthcare to all of our people, not allow for-profit healthcare to value your ability to live based on your ability to pay. Mother Jones once said, "I will pray for the dead, but I will fight for the living." And that's passed this resolution. Thank you for your time. And that's five minutes on the spot.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Joyce. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening. This is Joyce Root in Woodland Avenue in West Orange. I had not planned on talking about the presentation, the first presentation, but frankly, I am so appalled about the 40 minutes that was given to Pearl Media for a business proposal that will net only $292,000 per year for 25 years. But money being the least of it, this is a tremendous eyesore and intrusion into our suburb. There is not one community surrounding us that would allow this or that has this. If you look at Pearl Media's website, they only show cities, New York City, cities all over. Small towns like ours do not do this. It's just a shocking idea. And then the idea of how are we going to control the messaging on these billboards? The idea that this is going to be used for community messaging for emergencies? Well, that might be a few times a year that we would need this. The rest of the time, the public would be inundated with messages from commercial entities in our suburban streets. This is not an enhancement. This is a sign overload. It causes clutter. Do you know that in four states in our country, Alaska, Hawaii, Maine, and Vermont, they don't allow billboards at all, and they are known for their scenic beauty? In Texas, 350 towns and cities have banned billboards. The Association for Psychological Science did research and assessed driving performance and found that northbound drivers use their brakes significantly more while approaching billboards and made more steering wheel corrections after passing the billboard. These are a danger to our community. They are a danger to our young drivers and older drivers. The association also researched and analyzed how long participants spent looking on and off the road before, during, and after the approach. They found that participants overall spent significantly less time visually oriented on the road while approaching the billboard. I also think, just on another note, that the idea that West Orange would have these kind of billboards will make us look cheap and will affect our property values. I'd like to ask, if I could, the gentleman who is from West Orange, Mr. Shinman, who lives in Llewellyn Park, whether he would welcome one of these signs right in front of the gated community of Llewellyn Park? Just switching topics to the leaf blower, I also endorse the call to move West Orange away from the gas-blowing leaf blowers because they are creating such a public health hazard to our residents and to the workers who use them. I urge you to enforce the current noise ordinance and require that mufflers be inserted in the gas blowers ASAP so that we can have a little bit of quiet as the spring is on us and summer approaches, and that you seriously consider limiting the time that these blowers are allowed as we transition in time over to electric blowers. Thank you for listening to my comment, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, it's just an email address that's written out. So the person whose prompt showed up on their screen, it's DDAFIS is the beginning of the email address. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please. It's an email address, DDAFIS?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Terrific. Sorry about that. And thank you so much, Madam Clerk. This is Dean Daffis. I am the Deputy Mayor of Maplewood. I am here to support the resolution that is proposed tonight in support of the Medicare for All as a local elected. I thank Mayor Perici for the opportunity. I thank President, Council President Brown, and all of my fellow electeds on the West Orange Town Council. So I want to appeal to you as a fellow elected. It is very difficult for us at the local level to really take a stand on national issues. And I hope I have the ear here of all of the council members, right? There's always this pressure about national issues. Should we take a stand? We're local. Those things don't matter to us. And I'm here to tell you that this issue in particular isn't a national issue. It's something that is brewing and has been brewing in our backyards. Professionally, I work in housing. I work at the Department of Community Affairs in the Division of Housing, and I see daily, especially during the past year due to COVID, the heartbreak and the heartache of our residents who are homeowners and our residents who are tenants and their struggles to make ends meet. We have all experienced the unprecedented unemployment due to the COVID pandemic and how many people have lost their access to healthcare. So Medicare for All is indeed an opportunity to provide a minimum standard of access to healthcare for all that is equitable and just, not dependent on employer-provided healthcare, which COVID has proved is really not reliable. And we cannot go on like this anymore. But as a local elected, I know that you all are, as we are in Maplewood, looking at your budget. You're going to be adopting a budget soon, and you're going to see those crazy numbers, right? You're going to see that $350,000, $400,000 that are just healthcare costs related. The premiums going high, high, and higher every year. How do we explain that to our hard-working residents, our taxpayers, our voters? How do we go back to them and say that as their representatives, we have not done all that we can do to provide them taxpayer relief? You know, when we're talking about $300,000, $400,000... You know, when we're talking about $300,000, $400,000, depending on your tax assessment in in West Orange, which I'm familiar with, very similar to Maplewood, that's a tax point, possibly two tax points. How do we say to our hardworking moms and dads, our working families in our beautiful communities, that we have not done all that we can do to provide them with relief? Medicare for All does that. And for those of you tonight on the council who are on the fence, who are unsure, who find this to be still too controversial, I tell you, it is not. We are seeing, even in conservative states, the expansion of Medicaid and Health Exchanges Affordable Healthcare Act, Health Exchanges expanding because of this very issue. Because people are faced with this awful choice. Do I pay for my healthcare or do I pay for my rent? Do I make up my mortgage payment or do I pay for my healthcare? And that is a terrible choice. It's a Hobson's choice that none of our residents should face. But more importantly, as elected representatives of our good people out there, we must do the right thing. And the right thing is to support this issue, which is no longer controversial. Kabira Myers, your resident, said that this has been adopted through towns throughout New Jersey, as we have done in Maplewood and by the entire county of Essex, right? So this is no longer a Democrat or Republican issue. This is a fiscal responsibility issue as much as it is an issue of justice. So when you take your vote tonight, please think about that. It is the right thing to do for your fellow neighbor. And if you vote no, how are you going to face your neighbors who are struggling with rising housing costs in our state? Thank you for the opportunity and all the best to you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Daffis, for joining us.
Okay, next we have Clara Silvestri. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Good evening, Clara Silvestri, 20 Grandview Avenue. I just want to thank Isabella Friedman for her presentation and her proposals to improve the town's noise ordinance. She made some excellent suggested changes, including ensuring that the town's current ordinance that includes the regulation of mufflers on leaf blowers be actually be enforced as well as motivating commercial and residential users to transition to electric leaf blowers. I'm not going to repeat all of the great comments made by previous speakers. I'm just going to mention that just last fall, my son, finally, I relented on my son's request to get a leaf blower. We have never owned one and what we purchased was an electric blower. I I agree with all of the issues in terms of noise and pollution. And so I'd strongly recommend that the council members take up this proposal legislation and make the proposed changes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have DT. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, my name is Darren Tobia. I live at Columbia Street.
Okay, thank you.
And I want to speak on the topic of gas-powered leaf blowers. Lately, I've been seeing a lot of interesting discourse on social media and that's always great to see, of course. I've heard some people object to this measure on principle. They believe this is an example of government overreach. And they're also worried about the initial investment in clean energy technology. Of course, many of us have a different view of this. We see this as an, we see this as an urgent health intervention. We see this as a chance to give a voice to those who may not have a voice because maybe they are landscape workers and they don't want to object to their employer's practices despite the way gas-powered leaf blowers endanger their health in so many ways. There was a time when asbestos was commonplace spilling equipment, but now we know better. No reasonable person would object to the cost of asbestos removal, even in a pandemic, even in an economic recession. I believe there will be a time when we look back on harmful technology like two-stroke engines and gas guzzling landscape equipment and think, how did we ever allow that in our communities? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Matt Dragon. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Matt Dragon, 13 Sheridan Avenue. I'll save some time and not repeat what others have said, but I would urge you all to vote in support of the Medicare for All resolution. And the thing that I would add, that I don't think anyone has brought up yet is if you weren't already convinced, this would be revenue raising for the town. If everyone had health insurance, then all of the ambulance rides that currently go unreimbursed because we don't charge those without health insurance if they need an ambulance to be taken to the hospital would then be reimbursed to to pay for that service. And so we would actually raise money if if a larger portion of the township population and those who pass through it and or work in the township had health insurance. So I'll just throw that on the pile and hope that you will vote to support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Akil Kalfani. If you can, please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, how are you doing? Yeah, Akil Barney at Seven Glenin Place in West Orange. So I have a couple of issues I wanted to address tonight. Thank you all for hearing me out. One is the issue of Medicare for All. I think that, you know, that West Orange definitely needs to take a serious look at this. This is something similar to what I campaigned for last year when I ran for US Congress that that we need to change the basis on which we fight for healthcare, a better healthcare system for everybody. And I think that this is a good approach for us to begin to push the envelope on. And the, you know, when we think about federal government and federal issues that there is a synergy between the municipal, county, state, and the federal. And the federal is oftentimes pushed by the local. And I think that that this would serve as a good push for us to think nationally as we look internationally and see the impact of things that are going on. And I think that, you know, I may have insurance and good insurance as a professor, but I can't just think about me. And I think we shouldn't just think about ourselves in terms of what's happening. And I'm not saying that people are, but I want to implore us to think wider about the basis of folks who don't have access to good quality healthcare. And the US, we have enough financial basis for us to really think about how we can provide for everyone else. And it's really just a shift in political will. And I think that we, if we garner enough political will on the on the municipal level, then that will help folks to see on the county, which has already come to that conclusion, the state and the federal level will then begin to say, okay, well, this is what's happening there. And, you know, maybe we need some, I'm a sociologist, so maybe we need to look at some of the studies that talk about where places that have healthcare that's provided for all its citizens that has a different outcome in terms of the health. If we look at, in Eastern Europe, and we look at, even you look at Cuba, you look at all these different places that have a different healthcare system that's provided for everyone, that you see there's a different reality in terms of the life chances of folks. And we have the ability to do that, and I think we just need the willpower to do so. And West Orange has the ability, and I would challenge, not really challenge, I would ask my elected officials whom we have voted for to take our words and to heed our words in terms of this issue and make sure that we make the decision that's for the best interest. And that West Orange be a leader as opposed to some, an entity that's kind of following on these things. I wasn't going to speak anything on the the leaf blower, but just for two seconds, I'll say that on the leaf blower issue, I myself have a gas-powered leaf blower. I've been looking at electrical leaf blowers because they do put out lots of fumes. And so I'm looking to retire mine and and get a electric leaf blower. And I think that we need to look about, look at that and really think about the workers, right? Who have no, who have very little, if not much influence on that. Some of them are undocumented and may not be willing to challenge their employers. And so if they are, have those kinds of issues, I think that we have the responsibility of looking over the benefit of all residents, whether they're documented or undocumented. And it doesn't matter where they come from, but that we need to think about what is the best for all residents and the workers who are the ones who are oftentimes have a lower socioeconomic status, then we need to think about their best interests. How do we advocate for them? With my last minute, I want to also address an issue that is a national, but has also been taken up on a municipal level, and that's the issue of reparations. If we look at Evanston, Illinois, if we look at Asheville, North Carolina, that these are municipalities that have pushed legislation that's looked at the impact of slavery in those in the United States and have begun to do things to address that issue. I'm imploring the elected officials in West Orange to take those, an initiative to to look into those issues. We had a, we put a marker up by Washington Elementary School that looked at the the impact or what they recognized the last enslaved person in West Orange. And I think that another step in that direction is to talk about a resolution that supports reparations for people of African descent, for African Americans. And that this is a groundswell that's going on. And I ask us to to make up, make an overture here in West Orange to consider the impact of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Kalfani.
Thank you. Next, we have Lisa Britton. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, I'm Lisa Britton, 71 Burnett Terrace. Good evening, everybody. I'll use my time tonight to support the resolution on the table pertaining to Medicare for All and begin by making a statement on behalf of Essex Rising as follows. The Steering Committee of Essex Rising urges Town Council to publicly support the initiative of Medicare for All. One of Essex Rising's principles reads as follows. Healthcare is a fundamental human right. We support a single payer system with health security for all. All of Essex Rising members numbering more than 1,200 people have as a condition of joining our closed group indicated that they support all of Essex Rising's principles, including this one, regarding a single payer system that delivers healthcare to everyone as a human right. In addition, our assessment has concluded that there will be budgetary economic benefits to the town if our employees come to be covered under a federally mandated single payer system. To mention just one line item, administration costs on our current employees' health benefits was $900,000 last year. And we're now facing an increase of nearly 50% on that line item charge, a 49.3% increase, to be precise. As I'm sure you're aware, although Essex Rising is focused on producing political change at a local level in Essex County and beyond, much of our membership lives in West Orange. It is clear that a significant constituency supports this initiative. And we hope that as our representatives, the Town Council will go on record in support by passing this resolution. And in my personal capacity, I would also add the following. The for-profit healthcare system we have in the US has put communities at a disastrous disadvantage. And this pandemic has brought to light massive flaws and inequities in the structure of this healthcare system. We've long witnessed private insurers profiting by limiting communities' access to care, hospitals focusing on profit and revenues over patient care. The system in fact creates incentives for hospitals to maximize profit. We've also witnessed the massive health disparities experienced across the country, specifically the devastating effect on communities of color. Millions lost their insurance when they lost their jobs during this pandemic. It's time to end a healthcare system that prioritizes profits over people and corporations over communities. We need to learn from our current circumstances and the tragic losses we've all felt during this time. Given that the majority of Americans support Medicare for All, we need to do everything, as Dr. Kalfani mentioned earlier, from the ground up. I strongly encourage our Town Council to join with other towns and the county and exert pressure on the federal government to do everything they can to institute a single payer system and healthcare for all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Moish Rudin. Moish, if you can follow the prompt on your screen and give your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, Moish Rudin, 38 Woodland Avenue. I just wanted to just mention, you know, kind of just by way of personal, personal testimony that Saturday was the first day of spring and just going outside into the little backyard to try to take in a little air, first warm day, to be literally assaulted by just the, it sounded, it felt like I was at the Daytona 500, just the roar of these engines, the fumes everywhere all around. And seeing the children going down to Redwood School to shoot baskets or play in the playground, walking past these clouds of smoke, it's like a factory floor. And I, you know, I think, I think I've said before, the few times that I've had a chance to talk to the Town Council is that I really, I really feel that that what what we need, if I can say we or I need, is to feel that the Town Council is protecting the public, protecting the public from unscrupulous developers, protecting the public from people who want to turn our airspace into a profit, profit margin, people who want to pollute our, our, our community, tear down our trees, destroy, destroy our landscapes and, and, and just create so much terrible noise and fumes. So I just think that, that I look to you and appeal to you as guardians of our community to do, to take that seriously, to, I know you do, but to take it, you know, continue to take it seriously and move forward and to, and to think of how this, how we can improve the town and how to make the town a refuge and a sanctuary for the diverse, wonderful population that lives here. So I'm hoping that you will vote in favor. Unfortunately, the discourse on social media is frequently dominated by, by extreme voices and bullying voices. But I hope that we can be reasonable and rational and just think, is this, how does this measure? Or how does it protect the, the, the people who live here and the children who live here? So I think that should be a guiding principle altogether. Sorry, you know, maybe as a, speaking as a member of the clergy, but I feel like you are, we literally are the shepherds of the community, the guardians of the community. And we look to you to, as I said, guard us from unscrupulous developers, to guard us from pollution and disfigurement of our, of our, of our land and to guard our airspace and to keep, keep this town the magnificent place to live it is. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Next, we have Barry Brendel. If you can, please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi there. Okay, my name is Barry Brendel. I live in South Brunswick. And I was asked by a few people to come up here to talk, pick on the financing of Medicare for All. So let me address that. Let's start with the fact that we pay twice as much per person as anywhere else in the world and we don't get the same healthcare as anyone else. We currently rank on, whoever does the ranking, we're 17th to 23rd somewhere in that. And we underinsure or don't insure 85 million people in this country. Now, fascinatingly, there's only one demographic where we rank in the top five of the world. People 65 years or older. Now, what happens when you get to be 65? You get Medicare. It's the only demographic core in this country where everybody is covered and where there is, their healthcare is semi-affordable. Why don't we do better? Well, we spend over one Well, we spend over one trillion dollars a year in overhead for, for profit insurance companies, or hundreds of them with their redundancy, you know, legal department, hundreds of legal departments, hundreds of accounting departments, of which the main job is to figure out how to deny you coverage. The for-profit insurances run about fifteen percent overhead by all studies. Medicare runs at two percent. Then you have the profit that's involved, and again, uh, numbers run from seven percent to about fifteen percent fair. Medicare has no profit. Medicare has been running since the nineteen thirties. We know that, or excuse me, since nineteen sixties. We know it works. Finally, add to the fact that Medicare is the only insurance company in the world that can't negotiate drug prices. Because of a law in the early two thousands, it said, we've got to pay the drugs through Medicare at whatever the sticker price is, we're the only people in the world who do this. And that's why, two years ago, Bernie Sanders took a busload of people, Michigan residents, went in and bought insulin, it cost them three hundred and forty dollars, drove them twenty miles over the border, and bought the same quantity, same insulin for thirty-two dollars. So we could save a boatload of money while providing more healthcare for every single person in the country. There've been twenty-two studies that cooperated this, nonpartisan Congressional Budget Office, Yale, and the right-wing Mercatus Institute, whose objective was to be able to debunk this, and count, wound up saying that it costs three hundred billion less than the current system covering everybody. Now, while the current bill's going to be debated, and there'll be some changes to it, I just wanted to make a couple of points, and I'll be done here. West Orange has a base aggregate salary of thirty million, six hundred thousand, and you pay, this is off your, your website, your budget thing, seven million, six hundred and sixty-six thousand, roughly twenty percent of the budget, which is about normal. Under Medicare for All, you would be paying seven point five percent, or two million, two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. You'd be saving five million, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. Any changes that they're going to make to the formula, the way I have it set up now, will make it even more advantageous, because the kinds of things being discussed is repealing the Trump tax cut, not raising the amount of money you have to pay. Employees will pay on their own through their payroll tax another five percent, which is one point five million, but that doesn't affect your bottom line. Now, the last, so again, I just want to repeat, there's saving five million dollars here through Medicare for All. Uh, and where's that money again come from? It comes from saving a half trillion dollars in profit and getting rid of the massive, massive redundancy and overhead. Now, one last added bonus you have is you send out a property tax bill that has municipal property taxes, county tax, there's a school tax. If any of those go up, you're the ones who get the grief for it. Those will all go down as well. They're going to be in the same position where they no longer have to provide health benefits to their employees. They'll pay their seven point five percent, and then they're done. School tax is going to go down more than municipal tax goes down, you know that. County tax will go down. You know, this is another saving to taxpayers. You're going to be able to send them a bill that is much less than it is now. Better healthcare, every single citizen in West Orange would be covered, lower taxes. Other than that, I can only think about a dozen other reasons to support Medicare for All, but to me, those are ones that go directly to you as a municipality, doing something benefiting everybody in your town and saving your taxpayers' money at the same time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Barry.
Thank you. Next, we have Kevin Malanga. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Lauren.
Sure.
Council President, members of the Council, good evening. A few years ago, at my wife's insistence, I went for a medical checkup. I don't see doctors too often. It says, all right, let's give you a blood test, one of those soup to nuts types of blood tests, and I get a bill, and I'm looking over the bill, and it says, blood test, eight hundred dollars. How much we paid, two hundred dollars. How much you owe, zero. I call up my insurance company, I said, this is new to me, so how does this work? Well, you owe nothing. This is paid for by your insurance. Okay, so if I didn't have insurance, how much would I have to pay? Well, the full amount. Really? And how about if someone couldn't afford it? Well, no, sorry, you, you just have to pay the full amount, and maybe we'll work out a payment plan. That's the way it works. So I do support Medicare for All. As was stated earlier, healthcare is a human right. First quality healthcare is a human right. Onto another topic, billboards in town. You might wonder why you don't see billboards on the interstate highways. First Lady Lady Bird Johnson, that's why. Highway Beautification Act of nineteen sixty-four. Back in nineteen sixty-four, Congress decided that billboards were ugly. Lady Bird went about convincing the public that there was no use for billboards along our interstate highways. No use for billboards in most places. They're unsightly, they're distraction, and in most cases, they don't convey information that the public is interested in. Idea of having billboards throughout the town creating light pollution, especially since we are now on the cusp of Lights Out or Earth Hour at the end of this month, as Councilmember McCartney brought up. It seems completely inconsistent to support these billboards in town that create light pollution and also harm migratory birds. I urge you to reject that completely as a unnecessary intrusion on our lives in West Orange. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malanga.
Thank you. And next, we have Lauren Svetviles. If you can, please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, Lauren Svetviles, Prospect Ave. here in West Orange.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you, Town Council. Good evening, everyone. Billboards and blowers, as other townships take two steps forward and one step back, why does it always seem West Orange continues to take one step forward and two steps back? You can add technology, lights, and interboard communication to billboards, but billboards are not innovative ideas. Mr. Mayor, Thomas Edison was an innovator. Billboards are antiquated in nature, and in nineteen fifty's fashion, they're about as innovative as bumper cars. In the days of all the social media platforms, we have ways to communicate, why this? Why are we sticking billboards up? Here we are in an age of remote learning and remote, working remotely on screens. We wanted to add walls of screens to our township, polluting our scenic township. Stick to wrapping the jitneys, please, not sky views. Onto leaf blowers. Moish, you had commented about the first day of spring, and I had to laugh to myself because like you, on the first day of spring, at nine fifty-five AM in the morning, I know because I took my phone out and began recording. My neighbor um took out his seven hundred and fifty cc backpack gas-powered leaf blower that morning, fifteen feet from our living room, to clean out his pack of sandra. Our dog jumped up, had to leave the room. I had to find a quiet spot to complete my lesson plan writing for the week. He continued using a leaf blower for the rest of the morning, and he went out of the neighbors across the street and did their yard for them. But that wasn't always the picture. I too owned a very powerful leaf blower for many years. I got rid of the leaf blower last week, committing to my various rakes and mowers for the year instead. Once you're aware of the damaging sound of gas-powered blowers, the less you will be able to ignore them. But the gas-powered blower aside, the machine itself and what else is associated with these machines? Oil and gas, which is mixed outside of the machine, unlike gas, lawn mowers, the snow blowers. This means more spills on our streets, on our properties, in our parks, and schools, and to dispose of the spent gas and oil. Where does it go? It's dumped in the garbage, down the sewer. People don't know where to get it. I get texts um for our Green West Orange, asking what to do with spent fuel. Some people dump it behind the garage or on their weeds. There are numerous studies about the harm of leaf blowers. Regardless of what study is cited, which source is used and data is presented, the bottom line is that leaf blowers are extremely damaging to our town's air quality. Quite often, it's not just one leaf blower. You see a team of blowers out there in yards. As the owner of Fred Small Engine told me last week, companies continue to make machines that are bigger and more powerful. People can't get enough, get their yards cleaned enough, quick enough. There's also quite literally hundreds of studies, not one of them points to leaf blowers being a good alternative to electric blowers or rigs. I know some on this council have, um, shared hesitation with gas-powered blower ban because of its possible impact on landscapers, possible impact, I repeat. I asked the Town Council to visit www dot greenaction dot org, greenaction dot org, and search environmental justice and environmental equity. I believe progressive approach to our town should take, um, a, I believe our progressive town should take a progressive approach. I agree with Mr. Kafani's points regarding the impact that not protecting minorities, undocumented workers, is a form of environmental inequality. We're not against electric vehicles, which hurt our local gas stations, repair shops, auto car stores. We're not against solar power, which impacts the local repair businesses, power supply companies, heating and oil companies, electricians. Of course not. The bigger picture is creating a township that is healthier for residents, businesses, and workers. Please look at how other townships are making it work. Also, look at the electric machinery itself. There's so many options out there now, not just forty-minute batteries. They have batteries that last all day, backpack batteries. There's a company called Ego that our Green West Orange has been looking into partnering with, perhaps offering discounts to members and other residents who wish to purchase their products. We welcome the township to join us as we explore having a buyback program to get these polluting monsters off of our yards, not of our streets. We celebrate by shelters, solar panels, pollinator gardens, bio-floating gardens, recycling pedestrian safety equality, learning gardens, school environmental clubs. Why not electric leaf blowers? That would be innovation. Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Sophia Amina Mohammed. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record. Sophia Mohammed? Okay, I'm just gonna, one more time. The name listed under Zoom is S A F I Y Y A H, Sophia Amina Mohammed. Okay, I'm going to come back, and I'm just going to make a last call at this time, if you would like to speak. Now would be the time to use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. Okay, the next person, um, it's just coming up, is LG Styllo Six. And while I think that is a phenomenal name, I do not believe that is your name.
Good, uh, good evening. This is Brent Scott.
Hi, Brent. Can we just have your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, I live at seven five Nestro Road.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President, members of the council. I hope everyone is having a good and healthy evening. Several things I just want to say. First, I want to um thank Mayor Perici for putting up the notice on the town website about uh West Orange being opposed to hate and acts of violence against Asians, Asian Americans. My friend Rosary Morelli called me earlier this week to ask me how my wife, who is Korean, was doing and if she'd been okay. At the very beginning of this pandemic, last May, my, the last March, rather, my wife was shouted at at the shop right here in West Orange, called in a slur, and told to go back to China. So I think it's very important that the town has put up on its website a message against that type of hatred and ugliness, and I want to thank the mayor for acting so quickly on that. Last week, I, I uh called into the, the hearing at the last minute, just as Councilmember Rutherford was speaking, and he had mentioned about the Open Space Recreation Commission and their decision on the, uh, the pool, the Jenny Dunkle Pool. So I want to thank the councilman for speaking to that and for dedicating himself to working to get a day pass or other affordable option for our lower-income residents who can't afford a, um, a seasonal pass. So thank you, Councilman Rutherford, for that. I am strongly in favor of a ban on gas-powered leaf blowers. And I just want to take a moment, I didn't hear everyone's discussion on that, but I don't think anyone mentioned some of the truly nasty stuff that gets blown into the air when people use high-powered, uh, gas-powered leaf blowers. In addition to the fact that the gas-powered leaf blowers themselves are a polluting entity that causes great damage to, um, not only people with disabilities and lung issues, but to our children. You know, there was a time before when people smoked in front of their children, when people blew smoke all over their house and in their car, with the windows rolled up, and we didn't know better. You know, we didn't know better. We know better now, and all of the evidence from the EPA, from various studies, from Princeton to Harvard, have shown that gas-powered leaf blowers in and of themselves are a danger to our environment and to our health and to our children. But I want to take just a brief moment to talk about a very unpleasant thing, and that's feces. One of the things I, one of the very first things I learned about when I came to, when, when my family and I bought a house here, was sometimes you're going to find deer feces on your lawn, and sometimes you don't. And not only that, there's all, there's all kinds of, uh, animals in West Orange, from possums to foxes, uh, to squirrels, and they all, unfortunately, drop feces. And these high, and you don't always see them. Sometimes they dry up, and this gets blown into the air by these, by these gas-powered blowers, blowers, and it is nasty. It is nasty stuff to have in the air, blowing around as PM-ten particulate matter. It is nasty, and it is dangerous to our health. I am happy to say that I worked for a, an elected official member of the Council of New York when we put a ban on um, um, car alarms that made too much noise, and they had to be silent alarms. That was, that was a huge, taking on a huge industry, but we did it. At the same time, we also put a ban on, enforced them, um, commercial and property owners to put mufflers on these giant air conditioners, on high-rise buildings, no less, in Manhattan. Huge industry. That was a heavy lift, but we did it. And I was in New York at the time when the town took on banning smoking in bars and restaurants. Again, the industry totally opposed to it, but someone had to speak up for the bartenders and the waitresses and the customers, because they were the ones who were in danger, and we did it. I don't see this as a big lift, as a heavy lift like those things were for that council and the councils around the country. Other councils around the country have taken on banning gas-powered blowers, and I encourage this council to do the same. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Okay, next, I'm going to try again with Sophia. I apologize if I'm pronouncing it incorrectly. Mohammed, if you can follow the prompt on your screen.
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me?
Hi, yes, thank you.
Hi, thank you. I was, um, ironically shopping in ShopRite, and I couldn't get my phone out of my pocketbook in time, so I appreciate the opportunity to come back to me.
I'm sorry, go ahead, yeah, your name and address.
So my name is Sophia Amina Mohammed. My address is two six zero Lincoln Street, East Orange, and I have listened to everyone's commentary, and I'm so glad. Thank you, esteemed councilmembers, for giving everyone the opportunity to speak on Medicare for All. I've listened to the dollars, and now I want to tell you why it makes sense. It makes sense because I am the mother of three sons on the autism spectrum. My children are actually five, ranging from ages eighteen to thirty-four. My husband's employer, for the last six years of his employment- My husband's employer for the last six years of his employment has changed our medical coverage five times in six years. So every year we have to find new healthcare providers. New specialists for our sons on the autism spectrum. To provide them with care. So for a person on the autism spectrum and a person with developmental disabilities. That means not only getting to know a new doctor, but a doctor getting to know my child. Getting to know their special circumstances. Getting to know them as individuals, but also building rapport and it's a process of new testing, which can sometimes be very traumatizing to a person with developmental disabilities. And I implore you to consider anyone that you know and love who has not only intellectual and developmental disabilities. But any senior who is in the same predicament where their insurance is constantly changing. Due to any circumstances, whether it be a change in their healthcare and their pharmacy no longer accepts their health insurance. Or whether it's a case like in ours where an employer decides every year to go right back in the marketplace and look for the most reasonable to them as the employer, the most reasonable health insurance to cover their employees. It has been a challenge. My husband's employer has now sold the company in which an out of state company has provided us with out of state insurance. So now that means that we're all out of network, including my daughter who attends college up in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. So we have to make a decision whether we should pay out of network costs for her healthcare. Or do we pay for the expensive college healthcare? So to have, to have the opportunity to be covered by the government that protects us and supports us. Or so we would, we would hope. We should be covered not just through the military. We should be covered not just through housing. We should be covered not just through education, but we have to be covered holistically. From a health perspective, it's very important. And when you consider your elders, your people with disabilities, but also the caregivers and the challenges that these changes impose on the caregivers, it just makes sense. As a caregiver during this pandemic, I have now developed stress induced hypertension. From the stress, not just being a parent of people with disabilities, but being a person on the front lines. Being a person who has volunteered my time with organizations like Our Revolution Essex County. Like New Jersey, a universal healthcare coalition. Being a person who volunteers her time with the National Black Disability Coalition. And other organizations nationally, internationally and statewide. I have found that it's taken a toll on my, my health to try to ensure that we, the people have the best opportunity to live and have the best quality of life. And that can truly, truly happen. If we adopt a resolution in every town in the state of New Jersey and in the country for Medicare for All. So that, that can, so that can be one less problem and one less instance of trauma. That any person, that any resident, that any human being in this state, in your city, your municipality, in your county and in your country, one less mode of trauma, one less opportunity for you to have to fight for your life. And we are literally fighting for our lives with the healthcare system that we have in place in this state and in this country. And I thank you again, esteemed council members for your time and for circling back to me and for pronouncing my name so beautifully and perfectly.
Thank you. I have a hyphenated last name, so I understand.
Thank you.
Okay. Next we have. And now I'm going to mess up someone's name. Zassa Kademi. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Yes, good evening. My name is Zassa Kademi. I live at Four Dawes Avenue here in West Orange. Firstly, I'd like to, I hadn't planned on speaking on billboards tonight, but I guess I have to say something because as I sit here and speak to you, I'm looking out my window and I'm looking at two eighty. And I'm envisioning a loud glaring blast of light looking right back at me. I live on the two eighty corridor and I was shocked and dismayed to hear that this was a proposal to be done. And the irony of global light out in the same talk as these, this proposal was not lost on me and I'm sure it wasn't lost on many. So I come out in strong opposition, this proposal as others have. I guess if you want to wrap the chitneys in, in advertisement, but listen. We are inundated with commercials all day and all night of our lives everywhere, all of us. So I don't see this as a necessity. As one other resident said, this is antiquated and it doesn't really bring the town that much money. Under three hundred thousand a year. So I hope we have a chance to talk about this further. I don't want to take up too much time. I just want to ask the town on a positive note to please come out and support and endorse Medicare for All. If COVID did not put a glaring spotlight on the need for a single payer system, I don't know what would. How much of a smoother transition or dissemination of the vaccine and healthcare we would have had if we had a single payer system. Thank you. Please support endorse Medicare for All Act of twenty twenty one. Now, the main reason I came here today was to just, everyone before me has pretty much said everything I was going to say, so I'm not going to be redundant. The last thing that I would like to say about coming out against gas powered leaf blowers. And you guys have heard me say this before is I sit and I work in my home. And not only the noise interrupts my sessions with my clients, but the fumes come right through the closed windows and choke me out and I have asthma and I've almost had to be hospitalized on two separate occasions through my windows because of gas powered leaf blowers. And some of those were the towns. Because they, they come on the street and they blow. So I, I know that there's opposition, some, some sort of argument saying, oh, that this is going to put it too much of a strain on people. On landscaping companies. Well, I, I'd like to propose that we enforce our existing noise ordinance and put those funds and put those fines in a fund for helping the smaller landscape companies to transition over to electric blowers as they will have to do in the future anyway, as our entire country is going that way. We as a town of Edison, we want to be leaders in this. We don't want to be followers and wait until someone makes us switch over. We want to say, hey, this is the right thing to do. We're, we're doing it now. We don't need you to mandate to us to do it because these are extremely polluting, polluting machines, both noise and in fumes. And I did speak to a local landscaper, excuse me. Silence that. He did speak to a local landscaper about. He had transitioned over to the electric blowers and electric mower. He, he wasn't so sure that, you know, electric mowers would be affordable to most, but he said the electric blowers were and the, the, he was more keen on them because they were easier to work with. They didn't cause health hazards for he and his people. And, and also that they pay for themselves in a very short period of time. As in not being high in maintenance and not needing to continuously put fuel in them. So I don't know what the fuss is all about, about not wanting to get rid of these extremely awful machines, but I've spoken to landscapers who, who are happy with them. So please consider this when you, when you think about this topic. Thank you. I guess I'm out of, out of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And Rosary Morelli, if you can please, Rosary, I have to promote you to a panelist. If you just hold on one moment. And while I'm bringing a rosary over, if I'm going to make this the final, final call before I get to Mr. Puglisi. If there's anyone else who would like to speak using the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. And just stop your video and I will unmute you. And Rosary, you should be set.
Okay, I just dropped off by itself. I don't know what happened. I had it.
Yeah, no, it doesn't. It doesn't by itself. I moved you over to a panelist.
Okay, so I'm okay?
You're good.
Okay, I have two issues I want to talk about tonight.
Sorry, Rosary, we just need to state your name and address for the record.
Oh, I thought everybody knew it. Rosary Morelli Ralph Road.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I have two issues. One is to praising efforts being put forth by Laura Van Dyke, the Director of Senior Services, her assistant, Noelia Perez and Dorothy Sanders, who wrote our action plan to make West Orange age friendly and won recognition from AARP. These women have done an outstanding job and they're just continuing to do better. If anybody gets a chance to, this last program was the legacies. I think they're going to put on the website. These were letters that senior citizens wrote to the students in high school. Great letters. We talk about how tenacious we were with the tragedies that we dealt with. They're great letters. Just read them. You'll love them. And I think they'll be on the website shortly. The other is a subject that makes me very, very emotional because it affects my family. And this is the attacks that are being made on Asian Americans. I think in this country, we're going in the wrong direction. Hatred is growing and racial hatred has, has grown. It's crazy when people who live in this country can't walk in the street without fearing being attacked, hoping that West Orange, I know they did come out and post their feelings or whatever you want to call it there. But as I said, whatever they want to call it, posted that I'm hoping because West Orange has never been a township that people have been afraid to live in. But I hope we take action. Last night Livingston had a protest march in the township. I'm reaching out to the council and to the mayor, please make this, move it to the top of your list. It doesn't only affect Asian Americans. It's a racial thing. And it should not be happening in the country, in the world, and least of all in our township. We have so much to be proud of and it's a great place to live, place to live. I'm here since nineteen sixty three. And I'm going to age in place and probably only leave when the great Grim Reaper comes to get me, whatever. But please, I'm asking you to do as much as you can to ensure that this kind of horrific actions, these actions don't happen in West Orange. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Your computer's gonna do something on its own again. Don't worry. We're just putting you back to, to an attendee. And at this time, seeing no other hands, I'm going to call upon Mr. Puglisi if you can follow the prompt on your screen.
Hi, good evening. Anthony Puglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFincenzo. Sorry, I missed your meeting last time. I had another, I had to be at a vaccination site that evening. And just want to give you an update on how the county is continuing to partner with municipalities, including West Orange on our response to the pandemic. Of course, we continue doing testing. Two times during the week on Tuesdays in Newark and Saturdays in Cedar Grove. We do want to encourage people to continue to get tested. The, our testing numbers have been declining. And we have dropped the days down from three to two now. But even though people are getting vaccinated, it's still important for, for everyone to get tested. We continue to do the weekly food distribution event. This week on Thursday, we are at Hendricks Field Golf Course in Belleville. Future events are posted on a weekly basis on our website, EssexCountyNJ.org. And I just want to spend some time talking about the vaccination efforts. Back in December, we opened five vaccination sites, one of them being the Kmart in West Orange, which is probably our most active site. They do upwards of one thousand to twelve hundred vaccines a day. We're also partnering with some communities. We are bussing approximately seven hundred senior citizens from Newark, Orange, East Orange, Irvington, Louisville, and Belleville for vaccination centers. We've started a mobile vaccination program where we're going out to churches, senior buildings and community centers. We're also hosting pop up vaccination sites at homeless shelters, boarding homes and other social service agencies. This week, starting yesterday, in the evening at Kmart, we started scheduling special vaccination appointment times for teachers and support staff who work at public, private parochial and charter schools. We've done about eight hundred teachers so far. And also we are partnering with your local health officer to identify and then vaccinate homebound residents. This is really an all out effort, both on the county and the township's part. And it just shows what can be done when resources from different levels of government and the community are combined, especially during these challenging times that the pandemic has created. As always, all this information is on our website, which is EssexCountyNJ.org. We also encourage people to, if they want an appointment and they are eligible to visit EssexCOVID.org. Appointments are generally added every morning at eight AM. And that's really the best time for someone to make an appointment if they meet the current eligibility criteria established by the New Jersey Department of Health. That's all I have at this point and I thank you for indulging me.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you. And that is all on the public comment side.
Thank you so much, Madam Moderator. I want to, just briefly, I'm going to, since we will be discussing some of the issues later on in the agenda. I'm just going to touch upon, first of all, Anthony Puglisi, I had the benefit and the pleasure of stalking that website for a couple of weeks until I was finally able to obtain an appointment. Which lasted literally from the time I parked to the time I left, less than twenty minutes. It is an incredibly streamlined process and certainly grateful for Essex County and Joe DiVincenzo's administration and leading efforts to ensure that we're all vaccinated. So thank you for that. And, and I was on with Senator Ruiz, Teresa Ruiz. And she informed us about the efforts that are being made with respect to the mobile vaccination centers as well as the pop up vaccines. Reaching out to clergy and we were talking about how to best address also the Hispanic community that may have vaccination hesitancy. So thank you for all of your efforts. Certainly greatly appreciate all of the information as always. Rosary Morelli, thank you for your words of encouragement and support for our team over Laura Van Dyke and Noelia and Dorothy Sanders. And I'll say a special thank you to Councilwoman Catalina for all the work that she did on ensuring that we were able to benefit from that grant to have such tremendous assets in our township. It was a lot of work, but for her efforts, we wouldn't have this benefit. So great collaboration, everyone. With respect to the Asian American Pacific Islander community, the HRC did meet yesterday and we are on a planning phase of what the township is going to do to, to support and in support of our Asian American Island Pacific, Pacific Islander community. And that should be done shortly. The mayor is completely supportive of having some sort of action and that is something that the HRC, the Human Relations Commission is working on. They did post it on their website as well as the information that they're working on it, as well as on the township website. So please keep an eye out for that. We will be socially distanced, but certainly need to come. We will be socially distanced, but certainly need to come together in solidarity to show our Asian brothers and sisters that we are here for them and do not tolerate hate of any sort. With respect to Medicare for All, that is on the agenda, so I am not going to address those comments at this time because council colleagues and I will have that discussion. With respect to the gas leaf blower, that is not on our agenda, but we will, as a council, have a discussion during new business and see how we want to move forward in that regard. So I will leave that for later. And Mr. Fagan, thank you for always coming on and providing us with, with such useful information. I didn't realize that loose leaves were not being picked up, but certainly appreciate that insight. I will go now to my council colleagues, Councilwoman Catalina.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you for your kind words. And Rosary, always in agreements and working with you to help us also move the senior initiatives along. A lot of great community members as well. So it's a great initiative. Glad that it's continuing and we look forward as we're continuing to work on more grants for the community. And the department has done such a great job with programming, especially this past year with the pandemic. So very grateful that everything was in place for when the pandemic hit. Also, you know, thankful for the mayor for his statement in regards to, once again, unfortunately, more hatred out there, which, you know, as our community, I'm very proud of what we do here in West Orange. And sorry to hear about Mr. Scott's wife's experience. So uncalled for, shouldn't be. But we're going to continue to work hard as a community to make sure that we're unique to the rest of the world out there in these horrible times. Anthony Puglisi, awesome work from the county. Once again, just the, just getting our residents vaccinated and with the testing feed in them. Just, just thank you and to the county executive and all at the county for all their hard work. We really appreciate it. I know we're going to address some things later, but I've been sitting here with all the comments in regards to the leaf blowers. And I appreciate, I talked to a few residents past couple of weeks. I apologize to those who I didn't come on the Zoom call with. I think I was the only council person that maybe did not attend the Zoom call. I, I've just been tied up lately and I know where I stand with this. I think it's great. I think with, with you educating the public about the leaf blowers, but also we need to be practical to our small business owners, to our residents, and, and to our even expense for the township. So of course, everyone's health and safety is paramount. We will always work to continue in educating the public. However, I've been working from home for the past 20 years and leaf blowers have, you know, if, if landscapers next door, I go to another room, it's a little inconvenient, but yet, you know, this is in times of a pandemic. And to put another burden on small business owners, I, I just can't, I just can't, can't do that to them. I see a lot of our landscapers have their employees wear headphones for the noise. I'm glad a lot of them are moving towards electric ones. I know battery packs, I don't think would really work too well because that's another, you know, for all the environmentalists that were on the call tonight. You know, the, the battery packs is not good for the environment as well to dispose of them when, when they're useless. But I have no problem looking at the ordinance, tweaking the time on the weekends. It is too early. Sometimes I even have to, you know, scold my husband sometimes going to blow leaves late in the, on the Saturday afternoon, especially in the hot summer months when, you know, he works all week. And to be mindful, but we all need to be more mindful. We're all, so many of us are working from home. Like I said, I've been doing it for 20 years. So many of us are now. And we all need to have to be mindful to our neighbors. By the way, Ed, welcome to the, to the neighborhood. I live right down the street from you, so hopefully I'll get to meet you someday. But yeah, we'll talk about it later, but I, I think we really have to be considerate as well to our small business owners because most of them are minority owned, the landscapers. I know some comments were made there. Regards to Medicare for All, I look forward to that conversation. I'm going to be pulling it and I'll discuss why later. And regards to the billboards, I do have some concerns about the sign locations. I mentioned that earlier in the evening and have a few more questions and I look forward to that conversation with new business. But just, just for the, the folks that came on the call tonight, we have a responsibility. You know, we have to create revenue for this budget and, and every budget. And so we have to look at this. The, the mayor brings us these innovative ideas. And we, it's our job to tweak them if we feel that something may not work 100%. But again, we, we do need to bring revenue into the township. So it's part of our, one of our responsibilities. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman McCartney.
Well, thank you, Council President. I'm going to work backwards as well with, like you did, saying that, wanted to say thank you to Anthony Puglisi just for addressing this global crisis so well here in West, well, still here in Essex County. You know, we do keep hearing how well and efficient our vaccination center is here in the Kmart Plaza and, and the same reports around the county. And just with the food distribution, I, I just commend them for the work that they're doing. And also the comment that was just made about the HRC with Rosary Morelli's comment and Brent Draper Scott's comment. Thank the HRC for taking action to support Asian American Pacific Islanders. It's just unbelievable and unbearable that people are still behaving this way. The guests, well, and I wanted to say thank you to Joe Fagan for the reminder about recycling and putting things out in plastic because they, there are some posts that people are upset that their recycling is not picked up. I would also recommend that everyone go to the township website and look at Recycle Coach, which is something that the Environmental Commission put out a few years back, which gives all of the parameters on what and when to recycle. That's on the town website. And as far as guess, the leaf blowers, if we're going to talk about that right now, too. I actually wanted to thank, thank the presenter for the proposal. It wasn't as severe as I thought it was going to be. I think where I can see us moving forward is educating the public on the use of electric. We haven't, you know, personally, we have an electric car. We have an electric mower. We have an electric blower, you know, but we have a small lot for commercial operators to be using that. It, it is an added expense, but I think as we can, if we work on continuing to educate public on the related health issues, then steps can be taken. Requiring the muffler makes a lot of sense. I don't know about transitioning this till the fall of 2021. That just sounds too soon. I could see us amending our ordinance, changing the times with so many people working from home. I could see adjusting the times, turning them nine to five instead of eight to five. And then limiting, I saw on the Maplewood ordinance about limiting the use. I could see during June, July, August, and September prohibiting the use during that time. I can't see a complete ban on that right now, especially during COVID and especially during everyone struggling with, again, educating the public on the related health issues. The electric blowers just are not of commercial grade at this time. It would include too many backup batteries and especially some of the properties that are even here in town. I think we're just not there yet. Other issues we will address later. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. Councilman Rutherford.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank all of the public commenters. I'm going to try and make my comments brief. With regard to Medicare for All, I am going to say something now. I do understand that many of the public commenters will leave and not be present at the end of the meeting. I just want you to know that I, I support it. I am for it. I think it is healthcare as a human right. And if we are going to be serious about equity for all of our residents, we have to, we can't talk about it and then not do something about it. And not pay lip service to standing up for the least of these and for communities that have been left out. And then when an opportunity presents itself to actually do something meaningful for them, we pass on it. So I, I am fully supportive of it. I will also say with regard to the ban on gas-powered blowers and such. Initially, when I heard of this issue, I was not in support of it. I looked at it from a business owner standpoint, similar to what my council colleagues have already stated. It is, I, I thought it would be onerous. I thought it would be government overreach. But after hearing the presentations and speaking to various residents in town, the health issues, and again, the equity issues with regard to the folks that are actually performing the work, to me trump the business issues. And I, I do think we have to balance that. So we'll have to figure out what the runway is and we can have that conversation later. But there, instead of choosing a yes or a no, let's figure out how we can get that done to move West Orange forward. Want to thank Kabira Myers for alerting us to the tenants' rights town hall on March 30th at 6:00 PM, for those that joined late. Again, there's a tenants' rights town hall, March 30th, 6:00 PM, and the information can be found on the West Orange website under the rent leveling board. With regard to the billboards, I am happy to have this conversation. I think this is what we're supposed to do. My initial thinking was that we can use technology to, to work, to, to integrate some of the different functions in town. But, but I am happy to have that conversation. And I think it's an important conversation when we make decisions like this. I do need to address Mr. Scott's comments regarding the Open Space Recreation Committee. He stated that I dedicated myself to working on a day pass or other relief. Mr. Scott knows that that is not what happened. And, and it's extremely disappointing to even have to address things like this. In our meeting, which I believe was recorded, and I do have the minutes, I stated very clearly that while I was initially supportive of moving in that direction and trying to figure out a solution for those that are unable to afford a season pass to the pool, I told him then I was no longer willing to do it. And the reason is because that work needs to be done in the committee. To put that work on the town council is, I think, unfair. It has to start in the committee. A structure, a framework needs to be presented to the council that the council can then evaluate and do their additional homework on. But to drop a problem of that magnitude on the town council's lap without doing any of the work upfront, I think is unfair to the town council. We had an opportunity to do the work in the town council. Mr. Scott chose to ignore what was discussed. I'm sorry, we had an opportunity to do the work in the Open Space Recreation Committee. Mr. Scott chose to ignore what was agreed to and discussed in that committee and then jumped the gun and take this and make it a political issue when it shouldn't be. There's so much politics injected into every single one of these issues and it leads to poorer outcomes. It leads to people becoming entrenched in their position and unwilling to be open-minded and listen to the other side. And that is toxic. And to me, it's unwelcome. We got to stop that. If we want to be serious about helping people, we have to follow a certain approach and strategy. So Mr. Scott, I encourage you, if this is an issue that is on the, the front burner for you, do the work in the Open Space Recreation Committee. And then we can present something to the town council that the town council can work on. Finally, well, not finally, sorry, with regard to, and I did not get your last name, but Safiya's personal statements regarding Medicare for All. I hope everyone heard what her particular circumstance is. And her circumstance is not unusual. So we certainly need to consider all of our residents when we make decisions like this. I want to thank Rosary Morelli for her continued service. And she and others, including Mr. Scott, spoke about anti-Asian hate. You know, it is heartbreaking. In a town like West Orange that is so diverse, for people to still in 2021 have to worry about either their own or their family's safety because of racism. We have learned to live together. This is one of the most diverse communities in the state of New Jersey. And we need to lead on this. I want to thank the mayor for his statement. I want to thank my council colleagues. And I haven't spoken to all of you about it, but I understand your sentiments. What we should be clear on is that this town does not stand for hate of any kind. And every single time there is an infraction, there is an issue in this town where someone acts in a hateful way, we all, as one voice, need to be united against it. I, I don't post on social media much anymore. I, I will look at things from time to time. I saw that there were some stickers or, or, or something of that sort placed in some places in town. Those, for some people, are minor incidents. But when those minor incidents go unaddressed, they get larger. There's no room for hate in West Orange. And I stand with the Asian community, with my council colleagues, the mayor, and the entire administration against any hate. But particularly when we have eight people murdered in cold blood in such a horrific fashion, a statement has to be made. And I think we all need to lock arms and make that statement together. Thank you for indulging my time. I'm done.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Council President. The beauty in going last is always that the sentiments that I share have already been shared by my council colleagues. I do want to again highlight and thank Mr. Puglisi for the county's perseverance in making sure residents are vaccinated. I am, as well, received my first vaccination. I am also very excited about the partnerships with the churches and community centers. I have received numerous calls from residents, not just in West Orange, but friends in the area with the difficulty in scheduling appointments via the online system. So very happy that there are partnerships in different municipalities and in different locales to make sure everyone who wants to receive a vaccine does indeed do so. Many of the topics we will again talk about under pending matters, so I will defer my comments to that time. Also wanted to talk about the billboards. Just briefly, again, we will talk about that in pending matters. But we do need to include the community in those conversations as well as looking to expand the conversation to those who will be impacted by the ban on leaf. as well as looking to expand the conversation to those who will be impacted by the ban on leaf blowers. So with that, thank you, Deputy Mayor from Maplewood for coming and support of Medicare for All. We appreciate the fact that you took the time out of your busy day to speak to us in West Orange. As we know, you have the same amount of meetings that we do here. So we do appreciate, and I want to acknowledge your efforts in making sure we understand and support that endeavor as elected officials. That's all I have, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Madam Clerk, please.
Okay, consent agenda, approval of minutes of previous meeting, March 9th, 2021, executive session and town council meeting.
Consent.
Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills. Does anyone have any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Council President, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Yes, I am going to pull for discussion, and we'll obviously take a vote thereafter. Item B, which is Resolution 5121, designating a redeveloper and authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement for the property. I'm going to say the it's either the Biddleman property, I forget the block and lot numbers, like the Biddleman property. Okay, so I'm going to pull that one. And I heard Councilwoman Castelino say she was in a pool 5721.
Yes, Council President, please.
Thank you. So those two, and do any of my other council colleagues have items they want to pull?
Council President?
Yes.
I'm not going to pull this resolution, but since we're talking about, you know, having the mayor come on and give a presentation, looking for ways to generate revenue for the town, innovative ideas, we keep saying. I wanted to, there are three resolutions tonight about our tax, our tax assessments. And again, this came from a simple idea, asking Charles Blau, our tax attorney, to look at how we tax cell towers. And he pursued it, and I am just so thrilled. It says, as a result of the settlement, the township will receive an additional tax payment for 2019, 2020, and an increased assessment for 2021 to be fixed at $17,500,000. I don't know, you know, these just questions that come up, we welcome, you know, and you get someone that's going to pursue it and and just think about, you know, ways to generate tax revenue. So I just, I just have to say something about that.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Same.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. Resolution 5121 was pulled by Council President, Resolution of the Township of West Orange, Designating a Redeveloper and Authorizing the Execution of a Redevelopment Agreement for the Property Known as Block Nine Lots 11.01, 02, 03, 32, and 36, and Block Seven, Lot 22, on the tax map of the township. This resolution authorizes the designation of the Albert Group as the redevelopment for the Central Valley redevelopment and authorizes the execution of a redevelopment agreement with the Albert Group. Council President?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. For the public, if I I did share early on this week information with respect to this redevelopment and its history, just so that we can speak from a place of context. I've also asked our CFO, Mr. Gross, if he could please provide some context for the public and for perhaps some of my newer council colleagues with respect to this designation.
This is a a project they started a long time ago. We named it, renamed the existing developer as as preliminary developer, and this is now to the point now where he's ready to move forward and go to the planning board. So we're looking to enter into a formal redevelopment agreement with him. This has been a long haul. As you, as you know, these properties have been troubled properties for, for, you know, decades, really. And the township decided to take ownership of these properties and was able to grant funding to to clean up and intends to continue to finish that job by getting funding for for the balance of the cleanup. So now's the time to start moving this project forward. As you know, there's been two other projects that the developer has finished and operating. And we're we're really pleased to to be able to take the next step forward in this process.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. And ju- just for for clarity, when you say this process has been going on for a long time, it is my understanding that the interim, I think he was designated interim redeveloper at the time when the initial eight to 10 Central Avenue, the downtown, I'm sorry, the Valley, the Central Valley District Brownsfield redevelopment. Can you please talk about the difference between a Brownsfield redevelopment? And when people hear redevelopment, what does that really mean when it when it pertains to a Brown, a designation of Brownsfield?
It it really depends on what the 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 project is going to be. For instance, projects that were completed prior were were heavily concentrated with low and moderate income housing, not, you know, I'll let the developers speak, could speak to the the exact numbers, I think it was 50/50 in the project in what one of the problems, I'll let him speak to that. Those, those, those projects come with funding oftentimes for, for, for instance, from HMFA, the state of New Jersey. And with that comes a, you know, the terms and conditions of of taxes are actually the pilots involved in them are are dedicated by the statutes that regulate the there's also, in the same time, there's also what I'll call market pilots that can be considered in 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 these situations. And when when the projects are successful and the, and it and it can afford to have a market pilot, a market pilot presents more money to the township than these other types. We can go in that direction. So there really, it's it's really dictated by the project itself.
Council President? Yes, Mr. Tring. Thank you very much. At your request, Mr. Alpert is available. Maybe he can put his camera on or or the moderator could help him. And Bill Sullivan, who is an attorney with Skrinsky Hollenbeck and a West Orange resident who represents the Albert Group, is also present. So I know this has been a, as Mr. Gross refers to, I feel like we're almost in our second decade. And again, Mr. Alpert has been involved in this from the beginning. So if it's okay, Council President, Mr. Alpert could give a quick overview. And they did email a couple of slides to the moderator that they could put up. I also want to thank Councilman Rutherford and Councilwoman Williams, who about six weeks ago, I don't remember the exact time, spent a couple hours on a Zoom call so they could get all the information. And we tried to answer all their questions at that time. So, Mr. Alpert, do you want to take it from there?
Sure. If you don't mind, I'll just 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 quickly.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, so I'm Bill Sullivan, Skrinsky Hollenbeck, and I'm a resident of the valley. So this project is a labor of love for me. And, you know, this project really goes back about 12 years. An odyssey to bring life to the valley. Mr. Alpert came in when he and his partners tore down the old Harvard Press building. You may remember the old factory building that was basically collapsing into Mitchell Street. That where they opened up the east branch of the Rawaway River where it ran under the buildings. And now you have a running flowing stream there that hasn't been there in over 100 years. And they built a residential building on the orange side of the stream. And then with the support of the council and the planning board, they built the 100 unit project that is now finished. Unfortunately, we didn't get to have, we had a groundbreaking, but we didn't have to get to have a ribbon cutting because of, it just got finished in mid-March of last year. But that building is fully rented, and now we want to take the the next step. And Joe, I'll just summarize the numbers so that they know, and then you can talk about where we're going. The project that is currently going to go before the board, planning board, is 94 market rate residential built units, about 3,600 square feet of of commercial. You know, some people, when we did the first two buildings, wondered why we weren't doing commercial on the first floor. We felt we had to have a strong residential component down there before we had commercial. Now we're doing that. We're doing commercial on the first floor and then the residential above and parking. Part of our agreement that is before you includes our reserving 22 parking spaces in our lot for public parking, which it, when you see the plan, you'll see how close this property is to places like Luna Stage and the what used to be Miriam's Restaurant and the other restaurant across the street. There's a severe parking shortage, and we're providing 22 parking spaces. Also, a component of the project, but because it's on a different lot, it's going to be a separate application to the planning board, is we're going to build 17 low and moderate income housing units at 20 Tompkins Street, which is between Mitchell and Tremont, I forget, whatever the next one down is. And that parking will be provided on the Mitchell Street side of this property as well. So it's a, it's a great project, and I, and those of you who have been involved for a long time, as I have known Joe's commitment to the town. And I'll, Joe, I'll just let you explain, you know, a little more detail of it and this agreement process.
Thanks, Bill, and and thank you, because everything, that was a great lead in. Yeah, we were introduced to the valley section through our partner on two of the buildings, Hans, Inc., in 2006, actually. And that's when we started the Brownfield Development Area, which is an area of intense, you know, environmental contamination from past usage as industrial. And it's between, the valley is both orange and West Orange. And Rose, the center from the town, has been on from the inception, and and so have I. And it earmarked a lot of properties to be redeveloped. It's also in a flood hazard area, as Bill said, and by opening up the stream, we greatly increase the capacity for stormwater, and it's greatly actually helped flooding in the area, which in the last few big storms has not hit that section where our buildings are. So in 2006, we we started the BDA. In 2008, we actually bought the Harvard Printing Site, but it took about 10 years, and we built 128 units on the orange side, 55% affordable, 45% market. We renovated an art deco building into structured parking right adjacent to the train station. We opened up the stream. We cleaned up that parcel. And then about a year and a half after that, we went on to the West Orange side, and we got approvals for the 100 units, as Bill said. 55 affordable, 45 market, introduced residential market rate development and affordable development on the West Orange side. And that building's been really well received. We filled up to 100%. I think we've had one turnover in well over a year of occupying, opening up the building. And it's turned out great. When the Selecto Parish property came available to the township, they worked on that redevelopment plan for 94 market rate units on the Selecto slash Biddleman properties, with 17 affordable units on the Tompkins property. That totals 111 units. So it's 15% affordable, 85% market. It's the first fully market rate building, the Central Avenue project in the valley. The other two were half market, half affordable. This one is fully market. So it's it's really groundbreaking again. And it actually is a huge undertaking with the environmental cleanup. The Biddleman site as a, in addition to the valley being the number one, used to be the number one hadding industry or in the world, location for the hadding industry, which used mercury as part of its process. But in addition, the Biddleman building had been used for dry cleaning, which had its own problems with solvents. So we're in the process of actually cleaning up, you know, literally a Brownfield site within town, complying with the flood hazard criteria and doing the first full market rate job in addition to another 17, you know, affordable units, which will help the town with their co obligation. So we're super excited to do this third phase of the project. And, you know, we really look forward to, you know, beginning. It's it has been a long haul, but we're we're really gotten very far now. We are, we have an application into the flood hazard, people down in the DEP for approval of that. As part of getting a flood hazard permit for the neighboring property called Valley Road, the 100 units, we donated a a little boat, a Zodiac boat, to the fire department. In the really one in a 500 year chance that there's a flood, we are protected and the residents are protected. And the fire department can actively, you know, work in that, like I said, one in a 500 year, an event. And like I said, we're we're cleaning, you know, we're we're cleaning the Brownfield site up to residential standards. And as Bill said, we've now had enough mass with residential units that we feel a small component of commercial or retail on Central of 3,600 will just add to the, add to the area. The planning board, we want to go in for planning board approval. We've incorporated things like bike friendly and bike storage and the ability to do an electric car station, because I've I've heard tonight a a lot of discussion on green building. And we are going to build this building up to Energy Star standards as per the NJH MFA criteria. So we're really proud of all the things we get to incorporate, in addition to the shared parking that we'll be able to provide to the municipality. So we're we're just looking forward to the project.
Just to add a couple of quick points to what Joe and Bill said. As you said correctly, Council President, and I'm looking at it, on March 7th, 2017, so almost exactly four years ago, we entered into an interim redeveloper agreement with the Albert Group. And the reason the council approved that and the mayor presented that was because the Selecto Flash site was basically a incredibly unsafe building, a huge structure. I think it was 25,000 or 30,000 square feet. Vagrants were living in there. All kinds of activities were occurring there. And at that point, the administration wanted that torn down. And when we entered into the agreement with the Albert Group that was already working on Valley Residential and Harvard Press, really at that point, finishing up Harvard Press, we wanted that demolished immediately. At that point, that agreement, and it's still the the backbone of this agreement, was basically that we negotiated a million eight purchase price, 300,000 of which we asked Mr. Alpert to advance immediately and to tear down that building and get that eyesore out of our community. It was becoming, again, increasingly with Luna Stage trying to bring people to that area and with other restaurants and whatnot, it was taking away from our ability to do that. So so the Albert Group stepped to the plate. They they took down the building. In fact, there is still a pile of contaminated concrete there that is part of this redevelopment agreement will be removed in order for the development to go forward. The DEP has extended. So keep in mind, we got site control of the town because Valley National, it went through several bankruptcies, Selecto Flash, and Valley National Bank was the lender. And literally, I remember searching and calling the bank representative and saying, take the building back and and deal with it, go through foreclosure. And Valley National, that was over half a million dollars, said, we're walking away. We will not take site control because we will not clean that that property up. And but for the vision of the Albert Group and then going to the point this BDA, where the DEP and the EPA, we would meet quarterly. And and as Joe said, Rose DeSenna was one of the leaders on this. We would meet quarterly in the main conference room in West Orange with representatives of the city of Orange. Because again, this is a joint area that is suffering from this contamination. And we strategize on and on and on, and we got site control by a a tax foreclosure of Selecto Flash. And that's when in 2017, we entered into this agreement. And then the Biddleman property, which is immediately to the west and adjacent next to the Krausers, that site went into incredible tidal mess on every that site went into incredible tidal mess on every level that a church bought it, then a New York lawyer bought it. And then we were on and on with different brokers playing shell games. And in the end, we had an opportunity to acquire title of that for a hundred thousand dollars. And we went back to Mr. Alpert and we said, "We don't want to cut the check now. You're the interim developer. You advanced the money." And again, this council approved it and he advanced another hundred thousand dollars for that. Then when we went through and started to get money for there, as you all know, there are two aspects of the environmental issue. One is defining the problem and then the other is the remedial action work plan, which is implementing it. Under this HDRSF, they'll pay you a hundred percent for investigating, but only seventy-five percent for remediation. And again, that's baked into this redeveloper agreement. So at the end of the day, we had to remove an underground storage tank. Again, we went back to the Alpert Group. We said, "You advance, the, the, we'll get seventy-five percent from the state. You advance the twenty-five percent on that." So again, this is creating a neighborhood and, and, and that's why, and maybe now if the moderator could pull up a couple of the slides that I know some of the council or all the councils seen at various times, you can see what, what the end product will be of the, we'll call it Selecto Flash Biddleman Property and then Tompkins, which is literally a half a block away.
So Which one would you like first?
Do you start with the existing conditions? The one I called existing condition, the photos?
The photos, okay.
While, while that's happening, I also want to tell you two other points. One, we have, this has been a collaborative effort with Orange. We've met with the mayor of Orange. We've also met with New Jersey Transit. And we are extremely optimistic, going back to what Mr. Alpert and Mr. Sullivan said about the commercial needs. We also are extremely optimistic of getting a Midtown Direct at the train station, which you all know is less than a hundred yards from these sites. So go ahead, Bill or Joe. Joe, do you want to kind of? Biddleman, right?
Bill, you want to, or you want me?
All right, yeah. So I think I can do this. The, the photo on the top is the, is the Biddleman property. You can't see it. But there's a smokestack back there. That's why if you're driving around down there, that's how you know what it is. It's a very small piece of property with a very big environmental problem that I've, I've been hearing about since the nineteen eighties when I first started working.
Right. And, and as Bill, as Joe said, this was the dry cleaner. And this is where we believe a lot of the environmental issues, especially on the West Orange side emanate from. So solving this issue, knocking that building down and getting this remediated is, is huge for, for the future of this entire area.
The photo at the bottom is the empty lot to the east of that.
This is a half acre. The Biddleman is a half acre Selecto, which we, the township owns now. And then adjacent to the east is Selecto Flash that we now also own, which I believe Mr. Alpert is an acre or an acre and a half.
Yeah, close to an acre and a half.
Okay, so total, it's two acres.
Next slide, Laura.
Yep.
Okay, so this is the area that is to the, continuing to the east. We're now in the area that where the building would be constructed. This is the former Selecto Flash site where the building was demolished. And you can see here, this is showing it's undergoing remediation. And the gravel is down for construction equipment and materials when they built the other, the, the hundred unit West Orange project. Next. Now you, now you're looking on the top, you're looking east toward the building, the, the, the first West Orange building, the second building overall, the Val, we call the Valley Road building. That's the one hundred unit building that Joe was talking about before. And what you're seeing in front of you is the, where the Selecto Flash factory was, which again, has been under remediation and been using, using as a staging area for the construction of the other building. And the last photo is simply showing you the sidewalk in front on Central Avenue. All right. Oh, okay, this is on the Mitchell Street side. So we're, we're now on, we're on the Mitchell Street side and we're actually the, the fenced area that is right before that building is the east branch of the Raway River, the stream that basically divides West Orange from Orange there. And that building is again, the hundred unit building. And the photo at the bottom, now we've moved a little bit to the west and you're looking at the backside, this would, this is essentially be the area. If you're looking, if you read some of the documents, this is essentially the area where the parking lot borders on Mitchell Street, where the back entrance and exit to the project would be. And it's where the parking would be located for the Tompkins units, which are a half a block to your left.
And if, and again, as, as Mr. Sullivan is saying, this will be an egress out to Mitchell. What's important about this is this literally is a hundred yards from Valley, which is where Luna Stage is. So as the success of that continues post-COVID, this, this, they need parking and on, especially on weekend nights when they've had successful programs, they're, they're certainly, the, most of us have been there and, and it does become an issue. So we are excited about this shared parking with, with this project.
You see those, those houses there, basically at the end of that row of houses, you're on Valley Road and Luna Stage is right across the street.
By the way, one of the things that's ongoing now is that as part of this remediation investigation, we're doing vapor intrusion tests in, in all of those houses and on Valley to make sure it's safe and to make sure we remediate everything so there's no negative impacts then. That's part of the requirement of, of receipt of these funds. So there's a lot of proactive efforts that are ongoing here.
Okay, we should move to Tompkins now?
Yep.
Well, the, why don't you go to the architectural plans for Central Avenue first?
Oh, sure. Hold on, please.
I'm not going to, we're not going to do a planning board presentation here. I'm going to basically ask her to skip through the floor plans and just go to the elevation. But I mean, we could quickly show you what
You're saying that as if I would know what the elevation.
I was saying that for their benefit.
Okay, thank you.
But what you, what you know, and certainly these are all available. You can all look at them. I don't want to take up too much of your time. But this, these, these first few plans are the floor plans of the new building. Again, commercial on the first floor with amenities spaced. We are not allowed to have residential on the first floor because we're complying with all of the flood hazard requirements. And there, there, it's a very unusual situation because this property is literally on the edge of the regulated flood hazard area. So we're just in by, in some cases by like tenths of a foot. And but, but in order to comply with everything, we have commercial and amenities space on the first floor and you could just go on to the next one. The, and then these are the apartment spaces, though on this is the second floor. And then go to the second, the next one, please. All right, and there you can see the third, fourth and, fourth and fifth floors. Okay, go on to the next one, please. Okay, and then these, these are your building elevations. Obviously, they're not, they're not in color. We were putting this, we have, have that for presentation to the board. But we are, it is very similar in design to the building that's there now. Hopefully, you've had a chance to get down and look at it and find it, find it attractive. And we're going to maintain that consistency of look as we go down Central Avenue. Okay. Maybe, oh, okay, we got another one. Okay, thank you. I think that's it, right? Okay, then now we have one more attachment, which will show you the, a, a photo rendering that we have prepared for the, the Tompkins building for the seventeen affordable units on Tompkins. And that's what we got there. So this is about, as I said before, about halfway down that block. If you know Tompkins Street, this is on the lot, the, the, was today an empty lot, a grass lot next to an existing townhouse development that sits sideways, that looks not onto Tompkins, but down toward Valley Settlement House. This is that lot next to that. And then there were a couple of multifamilies further to the south and then Valley Settlement House. So it's actually pretty close to Mitchell Street.
So, so the final point, and then we'll turn it back to you, Council President, for any questions or other discussion, is that clearly what has always been contemplated was contained in the March twenty-seventeen agreement and will be back before you is the financial agreement. This project is different than Valley Residential that has, because of the mix of affordable, it has a lower payment in lieu of taxes. This has a higher one. This will be a ten percent. But that is required in order for this project to be viable. So that'll be subject to a financial agreement, which will be presented to you in the near future. That'll have to be done on two readings, but it will be a necessary component of final approval and getting a shovel in the ground. Again, the administration has been pressing Mr. Albert for, I'll let him fill in the blank. But since we met him, to get this project before the planning board. And we very much believe that based upon the point, after the planning board considers it, that if it is approved by the planning board and if the financial agreement is then presented to you and approved, that this project could be subject to being constructed beginning in, in the, in the fall. And that certainly is the goal, especially in light of, and again, I have to highlight this. As Mr. Albert suggested, indicated and Mr. Sullivan did, this project came online at the beginning of COVID. And the concept that it filled up as quickly as it did strongly suggests that the, the Valley and Central Avenue is more than back and that there is more than a market to absorb this new project or these new projects when they're constructed. So we don't want to lose the cycle. But there will be, again, a financial agreement. It will be presented to the council by a separate ordinance and, and we will get it back to you, I hope, within the next month.
Thank you, Mr. Trank, and thank you, Mr. Sullivan. And did he go already?
No.
There. But thank you for that presentation and the, the background history. I think that overview was absolutely vital for all of us who are listening here and in their homes. I did have a question, Mr. Trank, with respect to the redevelopment agreement, the second page of the redevelopment agreement, the last resolved. It speaks to Exhibit A with such changes, omissions or amendments as the mayor deems appropriate in consultation with the Township's General Counsel, redevelopment planner and other township professionals. If this, if this redevelopment agreement is approved, does that mean that any, any changes, amendments or omissions does not come before the council?
Well, there, there would never be any material changes. I, I can't tell you that there, you know, sometimes there's, as Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Alpert will indicate, there's sometimes stuff in the field that occurs and whatnot. But there won't be any material changes that change the size or the scope. All of that will, will remain consistent. Again, I, I think that language is for non-consequential items. And it's typically contained in most redeveloper agreements.
Okay, and then my other question was with respect to the township now owns Selecto Flash, correct?
Yes.
And, and Biddleman is also, we have site control of that.
And the reason that was critical, Council President, is the only way this, all this, what I'll call grant money was available from the state was for us to own it. If it's owned by a private developer, they do not qualify for the funds. So that's why, while we, that's why when, when Valley National Bank abandoned it, basically, we took it because, not because we would be liable for the environmental past misdeeds, but because we were the candidate that the state said could, could qualify for the funds. And we have, in fact, qualified for the funds.
Thank you. And, and I did, and when I first read the redevelopment agreement, I, in all transparency, I was a little concerned about all of the affordable housing units being placed on Tompkins Street. So is that correct, that there are no affordable housing units on, on this other property?
So, so we have fifty-five percent of Valley Residential. This one, and Mr. Alpert can explain the dynamics. This will be ninety-four market. You're absolutely right. And the seventeen will be on Tompkins, which is a block away. Keep in mind, we discussed all of this with fair share housing and that was in all of the fair share housing settlement because part, in parcel, as, as you know, and we presented to the council was, you know, to get, to meet our knee, our, our requirements under that. But yes, that was, when this went through the redevelopment and when this went through the fair share housing, the discussion was to maximize the yield by getting Tompkins Street built. Tompkins, as, as we indicated before, we also own Tompkins. But despite all of our efforts to get that jump-started, that's why we said to the Alpert Group, "You're not starting this project without starting that one simultaneously." We want Tompkins built and available as part of this and the Alpert Group's agreed.
So, and Mr. Alpert, if you can just describe, and this is, to be honest, this is the first rendering I saw about the Tompkins Street development. Obviously, my initial concern upon reading that there, you know, for me, that what it represented was a segregation of low-income housing residents, which I am completely opposed to. That's not to say that your other project, which is completely fifty-five percent affordable, it does not speak, I mean, it speaks to your value or your, your, how you perceive these projects as a developer. So I can appreciate that, but I certainly do have a concern that Tompkins Street is going to be somewhat segregated. I see the plans, they look, they look nice compared, as well as looking at them in contrast to what is currently there. Can you speak to the, the logic behind that, please?
Absolutely. And the genesis of my company is we're, we're, if you had to give us a title, we're, we're more affordable housing developers. But once we're in an area, we, we, we will do market rate, mixed income and a hundred percent affordable. So our first venture in, in the general area went down to Orange, the old Walter G. Alexander. And for that project, we went a hundred percent affordable because really the area dictated. When we moved over to Harvard in the Valley, there was a unique opportunity. The NJHMFA had done a subsidy program for mixed income. And the Valley being able to attract higher market rents, but still not, you know, middle of, you know, downtown West Orange market rents, fit into this program where we could do fifty-five percent affordable, forty-five percent market and introduce market into an area that would generally be, you know, a hundred percent affordable projects, like Hans has done and like I had done in other parts of Orange. We, we took the same tact on the other half, we'll call it, of the Harvard Printing, which turned into Valley Road. And we weren't driven by a COA mandate or anything else. We were driven by, we thought, like you said, mixed income housing is, is great for an area because it brings both sides up, you know, in our opinion. And that's why the Valley Road project's been well-received. Our, our fifty-five affordable units are perfectly integrated within the whole building. But it worked because it qualified under this low-income housing tax credit program that allows you to do mixed income housing. And we got, you know, some subsidy money out of your COA funds. In order to do the third phase, we felt that, yes, while we thought the progression was from a hundred percent affordable to mixed income to a hundred percent market, we thought the area could, could do that, but we didn't have the same availability of that mixed income. And the only way to get my banks to agree to a ninety-four unit job there was to make one of them a hundred percent market. But that opened up, I needed to do my fifteen percent obligation because of the, the township's ordinance. So that's where Tompkins came into play. And you're right. Right next door, you know, I, I have a perfectly integrated, fantastic building, but this one wouldn't have worked as a mixed income because the financing wasn't there. So the only way to actually renovate both projects was to take the total of a hundred and eleven units, still meet my fifteen percent obligation on Tompkins. And you're right, that whole building will be affordable. And, but it's the only way to finance both successfully. And, but it's the only way to finance both successfully at the same time. Because there's certain programs for very small projects, like 17 units, where you can't do mixed income, it's too small. So that one qualifies for 100% affordable and I could finance it. The only way I could get the banks to buy into Central, quite honestly, without needing a big gap funding source, which wasn't there, which would do 100% market rate job, because that's what, you know, the banks would see in an area that is turning, but hasn't fully, fully turned. If I had the Midtown Direct now, or there weren't some more vacant buildings in the Orange, bordering Orange area, you know what I mean? Then maybe, like in Hoboken or the Upper West Side of Manhattan, you could self-subsidize a mixed income by saying, the market rents are so high that they'll subsidize the affordables. That's not the economics in the Valley. And quite honestly, I don't know, you've been reading, we're still committed, but things got even more challenging with COVID. Prices of lumber are through the roof and whatever. So by discounting 15% of the units on site there, would have made the job infeasible. So I did my first true mixed income on Journal Square in Jersey City 17 years ago. It's, it's a, not an 80/20, it's probably a 60/40. And again, the rents were high enough to self-subsidize between the market and the affordables. So there was a lot of thought, like I said, by heart, we are affordable housing developers. If you look at the Tompkins rendering, though, if anything, because of the size of that building, those might be even more appealing. If you go into the Valley Road building that I built, they're evenly dispersed throughout the building with the exact same finishes and level of construction. Every tenant is treated exactly the same. I agree with you, Council, or Council President, sorry, that, it, it, holistically, it is a great thing to shoot for, for full integration. And it works in a lot of situations, but you need gap funding. For this project, what we had to go with, with flood hazard, the environmental, and like I said, demolition, everything that Mr. Trank went through, I, I couldn't put it within the same structure. I could still meet my, my, my obligation of 15%, which again, for my company, I don't even like using the word obligation, because we were born, we've done over 3,000 units of affordable housing. That is in our blood. But I wouldn't have a project if I had to put it in that structure. I just, it wouldn't be feasible. And I don't want to see that land stay vacant.
Certainly, certainly appreciate that very detailed explanation. And I do want to turn it over to my council colleagues, if you have questions. Does anyone have, okay, Councilwoman Castellino and then Councilman Rutherford. You're muted, Councilwoman.
My apologies this evening. I, I'm, my computer crashed and I've been using the borrowed one from the township this evening, so I'm not used to all the controls on it. Mr. Albert, I, I just wanted to thank you. You're, you've been such a great partner, you and your organization with these projects. I, I just, this is coming into this last phase is really exciting. What you have, you know, brought to this area of the township, cleaning up the environmental issues and just infusing so much energy is, is really been so beneficial for, for residents, especially in that community. It's a shame COVID hit this past year and I, I can understand your challenges, because a lot of that community commutes to the city. So we are hopeful, we'll keep advocating for that Highland Avenue Station to open and with your help, I'm sure it will. And, you know, we look forward to, to a lot of great things to come in the next few years down there. I don't have any questions per se, but just want to thank you, Mr. Sullivan and Rose De Senna for all her work through the years on these projects. And it's just exciting. So, for coming in tonight and giving us more detail. Look forward to the future.
Thank you.
President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Rutherford.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Albert, thank you for your presentation tonight, as well as in the past. I am excited about the opportunity to develop down there. And I think you presented a very compelling project. Like the Council President, my concern is about the affordable units, less so about them being segregated because of the two Harvard Press buildings that are fully integrated, mixed income. But I did want to know if there was a difference between the amenities, the finishes, the number of bathrooms, especially for the three-bedroom units, as compared to the 94-unit building? And I'll start there.
Yeah, that's a great question. Same exact finishes, like I said, with the less density, there's some people would say, you know, less common space. So, so for some people would be even more attractive. Same exact finishes, same square footages. We don't visualize market versus affordable. And like I said, the proof is really in that Valley Road building. No neighbor could know who lives next door, which is the way we like it. Though, you know what? For full transparency, though, the bigger multi-story building on Central will have a community room. We, we couldn't fit that on the Tompkins, that's a very small parcel. But the units themselves and having separate entrances and, and smaller, in, in some ways, if you like a smaller setting, Tompkins has some advantages. But from finishes and everything, identical. We do not, we do not change things from affordable to market rate.
Thank you. My, my, the rest of my questions can be answered by email for either Mr. Trink or Mr. Gross. But I do thank you for the presentation and I really do appreciate your transparency, even with things that may be a little bit difficult. I, I appreciate that. I think that's the, the right way to have a public-private partnership. And so thank you so much for, for your presentation tonight. Council President, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman McCartney.
Thank you. So I also want to say thank you to the Albert Group. I've been involved in this for many, many years. And when Bill Sullivan says that he lives in the Valley, I grew up on Hazel Avenue. So I've been a Valley girl a long time. And, you know, I know people, if you have not been in that area, what Central Avenue looked like before having abandoned buildings there for over 50 years? Joe, I really just commend the work that you, you are doing, you have done. And the fact that I did that creative placemaking grant for New Jersey Transit at the Highland Avenue Station, I'm going to resurrect that. Hope to, to resubmit that. So that's very exciting. Best wishes. Thank you.
Councilwoman Williams, I see your hand up.
Yes, thank you. Thank you to Mr. Sullivan. Thank you, Mr. Albert, for your presentation this evening. I will admit that I was very concerned about the Tompkins Affordable Housing Unit. So I am grateful to see some type of rendition of what that property looked or will look like. And my personal interest was because I just sold one of the units right directly across that area for $350,000 this year. And so when you talk about mixing affordable housing and putting 17 units in a location that were across there, only six, I was very concerned about the impact of value. However, looking at the rendition that you have presented, I do now have a visual of how that will complement that area, not overcrow that area. Again, I was concerned about the distance and not having parking on site, but understanding and seeing the visual of all that, I just want to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to, to visualize what is to be. And I have nothing but kudos for continuing to reinvigorate the central area. And just thank you. Thank you very much. I'm sure the residents will be very happy to have the environmental cleanup, as well as to have housing that is representative of what we want to see in West Orange and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can we call for a vote?
Yes. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 5121?
No.
Second.
Okay. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Mathieu Brown?
Yes. And before we move on, Madam Clerk, I'm so sorry. And since I still have Mr. Albert on here, can you just briefly tell me about, with respect to the funding that you get, the tax credits you get from the state? Is there a requirement or do you use union labor?
We're not going to get tax credits on, these won't have any low-income housing tax credits. We, some trades, it's not a union project. Let me be very clear, it's not a union project. Some of the financing that we do use, like project-based Section 8, would trigger that. But Central Avenue will not be using that, so that, that will not be a union job. But we do, our contracts use union labor for some of the trades. So it, it is not a union job, because like I said, without the subsidy, it's a 30% markup usually in, in some areas. So it, it will not be.
Okay. I, I appreciate that. Thank you so very much.
And they, and the one thing a couple of people have said, you know, about energy, energy feeds off energy. And I will say, you know, Councilwoman McCartney, I think, is the oldest standby, you know, not oldest, I mean, the longest.
Now you're in trouble. You crossed the line. Do not withdraw your vote.
After the vote, that's why I said.
I have to resend.
Longest-tenured person and, and, and Richard Trank's energy and the mayor and all the council people before and after, it's the only thing that really, you know, gets you going to, to figure out ways, even in COVID, to do a third phase like this. And your, your municipality, I think, you know, you're right. I mean, in the perfect world, maybe you do all 111 units under one roof and mix it in. It couldn't work that way. But to have this secondary method that does work and we can begin construction during all this is a hats off to your municipality. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
Yes. Resolution 57-21, Resolution in Support of the Medicare for All Act of 2021, introduced in the United States House of Representatives on March 18th, 2021. This resolution was pulled by Councilwoman Castellino, I believe.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I'm, I'm not going to spend too much time on this one. I want to thank Justin Goldsman. I know he's worked hard through the years, advocated to get this on, on tonight. For the majority of the statements that are embedded in the resolution, I, I wholeheartedly agree with. Healthcare in this country is not affordable. There's so many that are without it and absolutely something needs to be done. I just have a difference of opinion. I have yet to study the, the new updated plan. I have not had time. I also am concerned with the impact to the taxpayers. I saw through the years, the cost of the premium skyrocket on the Board of Ed side when I was there and, and now with the municipality and us having to go tug of war with the, the union. So I, I commend, I, I'm sure it has support to pass tonight. It's not that against the concept. I'm just not sold on that this is going to be as affordable as it portrays it to be. But I am in agreement that there does need something that has to be done, because healthcare in this country is, is a crisis. So with that, I, I'm not able to support the, the resolution. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Do any of my other council colleagues have anything they want to share or, yes, Council? And then Councilman Rutherford?
All right. Yeah, this is time for the discussion. Justin Goldsman was speaking so fast, I take a lot of notes, but I couldn't take notes following him. And I do agree with, I do believe that everyone does deserve healthcare coverage, but I don't believe that Medicare for All is the route for us to take to get there. I don't believe creating a federal government monopoly without seeing the whole plan makes sense. This was from universal healthcare coverage. It is central to the well-being of the nation, but yet we still have 28.3 million people without health insurance. According to the Harvard Business Review, the case for a public option over Medicare for All, President Biden did just come out with a plan. You know, I think that Americans generally like both private insurance and Medicare, but of course, everyone deploys the costs. Medicare for All eliminates private insurers and increases taxpayers' burdens. I think the public option keeps private insurers and will help control healthcare costs. I am not supporting this, just because I don't know what it will become on that taxpayer burden. I guess Biden, in Biden's plan, he has an extensive healthcare proposal, which expands many parts of the Affordable Care Act, but does not include this Medicare for All program. Instead, it's based on a public option. And I think majority of residents, majority of people in the United States are still looking for that or an option, a plan for those who want it while being able to choose their insurance. So I'm not supporting Medicare for All at this time either.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rutherford.
Thank you, Council President. I am wholeheartedly, enthusiastically supporting Medicare for All for two primary reasons. The first I spoke about earlier, which is with regard to healthcare equity or justice. We know that Black and Brown communities have poorer health outcomes than any other community in this country. We know Black women in particular face mortality rates for, during childbirth, they face complications during childbirth at higher rates than any other community in this country. And that is due in large part to lack of access to healthcare, which is also due to the unaffordability or whatever the right way of saying that word is, or not having insurance at all. Medicare for All removes that. Everyone should be able to see a doctor when they want to. And because we have such a large uninsured population, costs go up for everyone else, because those costs are going to be divided by everyone else to some extent. So if we are serious about being a stigma-free town, if we're serious about diversity and inclusion, if we're serious about loving our neighbor, we have to believe that everyone deserves access to quality healthcare. In this area, one town over, Township of, of Orange, there used to be two hospitals. Now that town is majority Black, high immigrant population. There used to be two hospitals, there are zero. Irvington, majority Black town, used to have a hospital, it's now condos. Multiple hospitals have closed down in North, again, a Black town. East Orange General is constantly under threat of being closed. At the same time, we have St. Barnabas expanding with nine-figure projects. We see Mountain Side and other hospitals in suburban areas, which are less diverse or have a lower percentage of Black and Brown residents, receiving this massive influx of capital to provide all of these services. And it's done because medicine, hospitalization, all of that is extremely profitable. It is time for us to take the profit out of healthcare. I'm a capitalist. I spent 23 years managing assets in one way or another. I believe in making a profit. I believe you work hard, put in the time and effort, you're smart about what you do, you make good decisions, you should be rewarded. But there are some things that should not have a profit motive. Healthcare is one of them. So for our Black and Brown residents, for the immigrant community, for those that don't have insurance, for people that don't have good white-collar jobs, that are forced to move from job to job or, or working in jobs that don't provide healthcare through the employer or have to work under the table, they need Medicare for All. Now, that is a moral argument. That is something that as humans, who are supposed to love each other and care about each other and, and as elected officials, stand up for each other. Someone in the public comments earlier said tonight, we are supposed to be guardians of the community, protectors of the residents. This is that type of vote. So for those reasons, we all need to support it. But even if that doesn't move you, the fact that, I think it was Mr., I, I, give me one second. Mr. Barrandale, Barry Barrandale. There were several that gave compelling presentations, but Mr. Barrandale analyzed our own insurance costs, just from the municipal side, not what would be saved on the county budget, not what would be saved. not what would be saved on the school budget, but just from the municipal budget, we could save five million dollars. There's just no justification in a town like West Orange, where we see taxes going up year after year, that we don't take that opportunity, raise our voices collectively, united, to say this is something that can ease some of the burden on all of us and then take that opportunity to do it. So I encourage my council colleagues to vote for this. We can't implement. We're just showing support. Vote for it. Let everyone inside and outside West Orange know that in this town, we stand up for each other. We look out for the least of these. And we make sure those that have, whatever that disadvantage may be with regard to healthcare, can at least see the doctor when they need to and get the kind of care that every human deserves. And on top of that, we can save some money. Thank you for indulging me.
Thank you, Councilman Rutherford. Uh, Councilwoman Williams, I just saw you unmute.
Thank you, Council President. Um, just not to belabor the point because we are all going to vote. But I just want to share a personal story of mine, which is the fact that I am an independent contractor. And but for my husband, I would be uninsured or either have an insurance that was basically unaffordable. And both of my children were born premature. Both of my children ended up in NICU. Both of my children had million-dollar insurance bills. And but for insurance and affordability, I still had a tremendous burden financially. And my children are twenty-three and seventeen. No impacts from being premature, but when my firstborn son, and I went to Mountain Side Hospital because I lived in Bloomfield, New Jersey. When I went there, they basically told me that my son was going to die. There was nothing they could do. They didn't have the capacity to handle a delivery at that early stage. My husband said at that time, we have insurance. What do you mean he's gonna die? You have to be able to do something. I am a living witness of the unfair practices that women of color have to incur, have to endure. I don't necessarily agree that every component of this Medicare Act of two thousand and twenty one will be embraced and will work. But what I do understand is that the symbolic nature of this resolution that we're putting forth forward today shows that we understand the discrepancies in healthcare for people who are marginalized, for people who do look like me, for women who are who are of color, black women. And so for that reason, we all know that this is not a local bill that we will actually be able to deliberate and legislate on. But what we do need to to do for our community is show that we support and that we understand. Health insurance should not be tied to employment. We know very well with this pandemic, this epidemic has shown us. People have lost their jobs. People have no insurance. People cannot be well. The COVID pandemic has shown us a higher incident of people who have been impacted by cancer because things were shut down. And so for those reasons and those reasons alone, I also urge that even though we do not understand how this bill will play out in Congress for our residents who may not have insurance security, just like we talk about food security, we need to stand up and we need to stand up for them. And it's just that simple. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. I certainly did not come prepared to be moved by words this evening, but your words have moved me. I I'm sorry for your experience and thank God that your son and your your family is as well, but completely have to agree with you. Having insurance doesn't save you from having to make very difficult choices in life. And unfortunately, I I and I have a family member and I'll just say this, just I recently went for for my, you know, at fifty, you know, went for my mammogram and happened to say to this family member, when are you scheduled for yours? And she says, well, I'm still paying the deductible from last year, and that broke my heart because she cannot schedule a preventive procedure. And 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 they 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 work, they have insurance, but their private health insurance is so high that she cannot schedule a mammogram because she can't afford it, but she pays for health insurance. That to me is is so profoundly incomprehensible that we spend thousands of dollars, each one of us, because we all contribute to our own private health insurance care, that we spend thousands of dollars and still cannot afford to see the doctors or obtain the medications that we need. I I have shared with you personally in the past in discussing health insurance, the medication that I have to take one shot is twenty-four thousand dollars, which to me is is unbelievable. And when we talk about a monopoly in health insurance, that's what I see private health insurance and CEOs are. That's what I see them as. Because where is anyone who does not have health insurance coverage going to afford my medication? I wouldn't. I would have to go without. I would have to go without. And when when there was a time not that long ago, a few years ago, when I was between jobs, I did have to go get health, private health insurance. I I can't tell you how much that costs and and then the co-pays for that because it wasn't something that I was expecting, but I'm paying twelve thousand dollars a year in addition to co-pay. So when we look at saving our residents' tax dollars, we have to look at it that way because we all contribute to our own health insurance and we pay taxes. So if we're saying Medicare for All is going to increase our individual responsibilities towards taxes, we also have to look at that side and we can't negate the fact that we're also going to be saving thousands of dollars in health insurance costs. So i- i- it's it's to me, it's a benefit for all of us and our residents. And then when I look at, you know, from and not just the moral perspective of that for me, but then the the fiscal responsibility that we all have, I'm looking at page forty of our budget workbook from last last year. And administrative costs alone for the retiree administrative, and this is just retiree, not not everyone else, just the retiree administrative costs, we we've increased by forty-three point five percent. How how is that plausible? That's just an administrative fee. We go from paying, we went from paying six hundred sixty thousand dollars in retiree administrative to almost a million. I we're we're paying far too much and a lot of this money goes to CEOs. It doesn't go for, you know, to to reduce the cost of insurance or 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 medication. We're 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 at a place where, especially after this pandemic and through this pandemic, we have seen just the vast disparities, if you didn't see them before, just the vast disparity of all of those that we've lost and so many of them because they just couldn't access healthcare. My I I'm first-generation immigrant to this country and my parents certainly did not have healthcare. Our healthcare was when we had, we were sick enough to go to the emergency room. And then when we couldn't pay that emergency room bill, everyone else paid for it because you have charity care. Charity care covers that, but who's paying for it? At the end of the day, the fact that we don't access or we cannot access or some of us cannot access health insurance in a way that is fair and equitable to everyone is an outrage for a country who is supposed to be the leader of 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 the of a of of this global world that we live in. I I I have to support this one hundred, you know, wholeheartedly. I just, there's nothing that I can have reservations about because when I look at what health insurance costs, I have to look at the savings and also look at those families today more than ever. How many have lost their insurance because they've lost their jobs? It it's something that, to echo Councilwoman Williams' sentiment, you know, this is something that we have to do to show up for our community. You know, it's not going to be perfect. It's it's, there are going to be a lot of changes. But the fact that that so many in Congress on both sides of the aisles support this, the fact that Congressman Blone, who was the one holdout last year, who without his signing on to support this bill, they could not have a hearing without it. He joined on as a sponsor, not just supporting, but as a sponsor of the bill, has to say something that we're moving in the direction that it that that we all need to go in to help one another. If we here in West Orange are talking about building more inclusive, racially inclusive communities, this is part of that. You know, being intentional but intentional about using a social lens with the decisions that we make as a municipal body is something that, you know, I am am hopeful that we can all kind of see between the weeds, if you will. And seeing the time at ten thirty-six, I will stop there and, oh, Councilwoman Castellino, I decided.
Yeah, I just want to add because, you know, it's really hard to sit here and I I understand everybody's sentiments and to say that we're, you know, I want to call it what it is, you know, Councilwoman McCartney. I don't seem to be racially sensitive, which is so far from the truth. I'm gonna share my own story and it's about dental because I I don't, I don't have, I didn't for a while then have dental coverage. And when my son was thirteen years old, all his teeth got knocked out with a baseball. And through the years, as he grew older and had to go, you know, I did everything I could, took out credit cards because I I did not have a good dental coverage and the implants, he had to get seven implants. And so he had a really tough experience growing up through those teenage years. And so I just wanted to add something personally that many of us don't even have dental coverage, which is so, you know, I agree, there's something terribly wrong. I know how hard it is to struggle when your child is in need and needs that coverage. And these were all his teeth that were, got hit in the baseball with the baseball and it wasn't covered. And I couldn't sue. So not to get into the details of it, also have family members that have been severely hit by COVID and have lost their jobs. And but again, as an elective official, I sat here years ago, as did my my colleague as well, and watched the healthcare costs rise when Obamacare came in and we were hoping that would fix things. And the cost just rose through the roof and that was supposed to cover everybody. So where I I strongly believe in a lot of the language and and supporting and caring about our residents, of course, we care about our residents. I just feel this isn't isn't the fix. And there's, I just wanted to express that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Castellino. And certainly I hope that I didn't give you the impression that you were not sensitive or racially sensitive. You and I both know that, you know, when I was pushing for the racially inclusive Town Hall, you were locked up with me, supporting those efforts, and I certainly appreciate that.
Thank you, Council President.
Okay, Madam Clerk, can we call for a vote?
Yes, is there a motion to approve fifty-seven dash twenty-one?
Go move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Uh, no.
Councilwoman McCartney?
You're muted.
McCartney?
I was so intently listening, sorry. Uh, no.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Okay, ordinances on second and final reading, twenty-six thirty-nine dash twenty-one, and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter Seven, Traffic Subsection seven dash thirty-two point one, Handicap Parking on Streets and Subsection seven dash thirty-two point two, Restricted Parking Zones of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Some moves?
Second.
I can.
Okay, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes. Are there any members of the public at this time that want to be heard on this ordinance on second reading?
We did have someone, Mr. Goldsman, you had your hand raised before. This would be for this second reading. Okay, thank you. If there's anyone at this time, use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. And there is none.
Thank you. Do any of my council colleagues have any discussion questions? Now, Madam Clerk?
Hey, is there a motion to adopt twenty-six thirty-nine dash twenty-one?
Some.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-six forty-two dash twenty-one, and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter Twenty-five Land Use Regulations of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange to implement a settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Some move.
I can.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this ordinance? Please raise your hands.
And we have no one raising their hand.
Thank you. Any of my council colleagues have any discussions or questions? Now, Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to adopt twenty-six forty-two dash twenty-one?
Some moves?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Okay, there are no ordinances on first reading, pending matters, new matters, council discussion. We have the Economic Development Commission consensus consensus appointment.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. So council colleagues, I know we have exchanged some recommendations among each other, some resumes for those who we would like to have appointed as a council consensus. If you would like, Councilwoman McCartney, I know that you you were the first to nominate someone, so if you would like to, Councilwoman McCartney?
Well, not so much for nomination, but just to open this discussion that, you know, that was the candidate that I had put forward. And then we have since received three more resumes, all qualified individuals that have stepped forward to try to work with the this newly created Economic Development Commission. I was going to suggest that we revise this ordinance to create additional members to serve on it because everyone does have quite impressive resumes and they all can provide something to the commission. So I don't, I'm uncomfortable picking and choosing truthfully because of these resumes. And the fact that people are stepping forward to want to pitch in and help, I don't see why we need to pick and choose. So my recommendation would be change the number of people that are on this commission. And if it turns out that we each have an appointment, to keep the number odd, because I know that's the first thing Ken Cazier is going to tell us to do, then I I would think that we should look at that. Oh, now you're muted.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. Councilwoman Williams?
I just wanted to remind my council colleagues that we did initially propose that to the mayor and he indicated that he wanted. and he indicated that he wanted to keep this commission small. I also want to remind my council colleagues that the mayor has only appointed three residents. He has five appointments. We have a council consensus appointment and then there's a representative from the Downtown West Orange Alliance. And so to that end, even, and I get it, it is difficult when we have to make a decision. However, there are only three candidates that we have put forth. I'm sorry, four candidates that we have put forth in total. The Downtown West Orange Alliance does have an opportunity for someone to serve. We have three other people of interest, so we can decide perhaps or even ask the mayor if we want to table a decision for this meeting, discuss with him perhaps whether or not he would be interested in appointing the other two candidates. And and then we could have a council consensus appointment from the third individual if the mayor did not engage in in that appointment. That's just an option and an opportunity. You know, again, just listening to what he has said about trying to move this commission forward and not expanding it in his rationale for not having an expansive committee. Also note that each of the appointments are for one-year term. So that might be something else that we can keep into consideration.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Council, Councilman Rutherford had his hand up and then I'll come back to you, Councilwoman McCartney.
I'm happy to defer to Councilwoman McCartney.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney.
Thank you, Bill, Councilman Rutherford. I, the the last email that we did receive, it, I didn't know that the mayor had five appointments. I thought it was three. I thought there were going to be five members on this commission. The mayor had three. We had a council liaison and a council consensus. That's, that's how I read it. And I'm sorry if I was mistaken, which is why I thought adding additional people would not be cumbersome because everyone is bringing something of their expertise.
Council, Council, Council President, I I have the ordinance in in front of me. It does provide that the mayor shall appoint five commissioners. But I just want to add, you know, this, this commission is purely advisory. Everybody's a volunteer and always getting paid. And and I assume that when they're meeting, they're meeting in public and there's absolutely no reason why other members of the public, if they're interested, can't attend, speak, offer their ideas. So I don't, if we have, if there are other good people who want to serve, they can certainly participate in a different manner for the time being and and at some point, you know, a decision can be made whether whether to expand the commission or or to just handle it somewhat differently, but I I don't think that anybody would be precluded from participating.
Agreed. Thank you, Mr. Kaiser, for that insight. And yes, I recall that that the mayor does have two open appointments. I also know that in my conversations with the mayor, he has wanted to move this Economic Development Commission forward, so I'm going to ask, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Councilman Rutherford, I just saw your hands up again. Not that you went for, but just please.
Don't worry, thank you, Council. This is what we call a good problem. We have an embarrassment of riches. We have very qualified candidates, three of whom I know well and personally. In the interest of getting the commission going and honoring the work that needs to be done there and the mayor's desire to move aggressively in that area, which I think is important for the long-term viability of this town with regard to commercial development in particular, I don't think we should wait to make this appointment. You know, I I know none of the names have been shared. I don't think it's inappropriate. I I I know I've put forward and am fully supportive of Abdur Yassin. I spoke with him first about it and I am, and I made a commitment to him about that and I would you know, I would be dishonoring my word if I were to change that now, even though I know both Fred Davis and Lisa Farrell, who are outstanding human beings above in in addition to being highly accomplished, well-educated, community-minded, they would be awesome in that role. Abdur is as well. So I think it's important for us to to get that commission moving and then the mayor does have two additional appointments. I would encourage him to consider both Lisa and Fred. They are outstanding and have a lot to 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 bring to the table. But tonight I do think it's important for us to move forward, take this off of our plate. We have a I mean, we've already done quite a bit of work so far and there's no shortage in the pipeline. So I would, I would encourage us to to just move on, make the vote and move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Rutherford. I, Councilwoman Williams.
Just want to know at this time, is it appropriate for me to make a motion?
Well, before anyone does that, I want to speak to Ken first, only because we have four different people. And Council, Councilwoman McCart, I'm sorry, Councilwoman McCartney put out the name of Evan Nass first and then we received an email regarding Abdur Yasin, Lisa Farrell and Frederick Davis in that order. So would it be appropriate to ask for a nomination for the way they came in, the order they came in? Ken?
Well, I mean, we have two on the agenda, so.
Right.
Evan Nass and Abdur Yasin are are both on the agenda. I I I assume that they were the only ones that were up for the nomination at the time that this was prepared.
Yes, but then two more came in afterwards.
Well, again, if you, if the council, I don't think the council can put on more than two members. The mayor has five of.
I understand. Go ahead.
The council can only have one council consensus. I think Madam Clerk is asking, is the process of how we we vote for them, should we do it in the order of how the nominations were received? How she reads the nominations?
Right.
I don't think, I I I'm not going to limit you. You can do it however you wish to do it. I mean, I'm just a lawyer. The council
Well, all I know.
There's no set, there's no set way to do this. The council has to decide how they want to do it, so.
Well, it just seems if if, you know, Councilwoman McCartney nominated Mr. Nass and then she gets a second and we do a vote and he gets elected to the position, then there's no reason to go through the other three. Instead of taking, you know, four different nominations, four different second, you know, it just seems.
I I thought that two people were were going to be added to the to the commission.
No, just one.
Going to be one.
My, my mistake.
One's a council consensus.
I'm so sorry to interrupt, but I think we lost Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes, I was just about to state. So if we just want to wait a moment, so she can hook back on?
Yes.
While we're waiting, if it's appropriate, I I think it's fine to go in the order in which they were received and you know, and let's just see how that plays out.
Right.
I think that's the easiest and and.
I think it's the most. Okay, she, her laptop, laptop died, so she needs to call in. So if you just give me a moment, I can give her the proper numbers to call in.
Well, just to fill up some of the airtime. And since this is a recorded session, I want to give a big shout out to the Rutgers men's and women's basketball team for giving me something to root for during March Madness. I am a proud alum and love watching my Rutgers Scarlet Knights in March Madness this year and I'm looking forward to even a better outcome next year.
Excellent. They certainly were really, really exciting games.
Yeah, we 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 were this close with Houston.
She's going to be calling in. The laptop she was borrowing didn't have a charger with it. So I gave her the numbers, so she'll be, so it'll just be her voice, just so everyone is aware.
Okay.
It just takes a moment because she has to go through all of the the menus to dial in. I feel bad. I don't have the music ready to go.
Hey, Lauren, you have me?
Yes, there you are. Hi.
Welcome back, Councilwoman.
Sorry, sorry, folks. Okay.
I know you were having trouble with your technology today.
Just a little bit, so my apologies.
You have to, you have to laugh at those moments. So Councilman Rutherford, just as you got off, suggested that we just do the vote in the order that of the nominations as they were received, so that's less cumbersome and complicated, so we'll we'll ask Madam Clerk to go down.
I didn't get a chance to weigh in on this. I I really wanted, I'm not prepared to do that right now because I kind of thought we were, or hoping, I guess, I thought we'd maybe agree to add the extra change the ordinance. I I I like, I'm not prepared to vote on this tonight. I, I.
Changing, just, I'm sorry to interrupt, but changing the ordinance.
Well, well, I also wanted to talk to the mayor because I had a person, but I think he was going to make that appointment, so and I I didn't get a chance to talk to him today about it. So I'm not sure if the person that I had asked or, you know, when I thought we were all going to have our own appointment, I I just wanted, I I need to double check with the mayor about that appointment.
Okay, and and I understand that, but I think that because changing an ordinance and 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 the need to move on this sooner than later.
No, I understand. I understand.
Going to just delay the meetings that we would like to start having, particularly with the discussions that we're having with the downtown redevelopment. I think it it's incumbent upon us not to wait to make this vote so that we can have a constituted commission to start having meetings. I'm going to.
So we have only one appointment tonight then?
Correct, by consensus of the council.
And four candidates.
Yes.
And the mayor has two seats that he, that are still open that he can appoint to. But I I would like.
But see, I feel, so I feel uncomfortable. I I don't want to insult any residents tonight by having a vote with all them out there on the table. I, we could always take care of this. I I mean, we can memorialize it at the next meeting and maybe come to a consensus with us talking amongst ourselves independently the next couple of days. I don't feel, I I just feel uncomfortable tonight, not, you know, I I feel a little uncomfortable tonight, just to put all these residents on the spot. They're all kind of on the spot here, so.
Yeah, Council President, I don't, I don't, I don't know if if Councilman, Councilwoman Castellino lost her power before I spoke before or if she heard what I said, so I guess I'm asking.
Oh, no, I heard you. I heard you, Mr. Kaiser.
Because I think, I think the mayor's interest is that this get done so that this can start. I mean, it's not, you you know, it it could start frankly, I mean, I would probably tell him it could start now. You know, he doesn't have to have a full commission to have people act.
No, no, he, yeah, no, he he can start. I I I mean, and I'm not, and we could always come to a consensus in the next day or two and that person could jump on a committee and then we can memorialize it at the next meeting. Like we do with other votes that we don't have a decision on of this nature.
I I understand. When when we had the discussion with respect to the Rent Leveling Board consensus appointment, we had that discussion about that resident in public and we came to a consensus vote. I don't a- and it's just my personal opinion, I don't think that any of the members that have stepped up that have been nominated would be offended. This is, this is our process in appointing a consensus member and I think that the the mayor did give, you know, he, in his last email, he asked that, you know, as soon as we have a consensus appointment, he would start having, you know, the commission committee meet. Councilman Rutherford, I saw you.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Two things. One, with regard to what's going on Main Street, this commission is going to play an integral role in those kinds of projects. The only part of Edison that has been done, Phase One Edison loss, this is like almost twenty years that this thing has been going on. They need help down there. We just had a presentation from Mr. Albert tonight. He's got help in the valley and his project is done. He's now on Phase Three. We need some help here. The mayor has an initiative. I I think we should honor that and I think it's important that we honor that, but to the point of these individuals being offended somehow, I I don't know Mr. Nass or Nass. I I apologize if I didn't say that name properly. But I do know Lisa Farrell, Fred Davis and Abdur Yasin. And all of them are highly accomplished. Each of them has served in a myriad of ways. This, whether any of them win or lose is not going to be a detriment. It's not going to be a somehow a knock on their resume or who they are as residents or people. And then to Mr. Kaiser's point, these meetings are open to the public. So all of them, and I hope all of them, including Mr. Nass and including Councilwoman Castellino's nominee, for lack of a better term, I hope they all get involved. I hope they go to every need. Nothing will preclude them from that. But we've got a a task to govern. We have an opportunity to do it now. Everyone has had an opportunity to at least review the resumes. I think we should do it tonight.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yeah, I'm going to call the vote.
Madam Clerk?
Okay, so the first candidate we have is Mr. Nass. So is there a motion to appoint him to the Economic Development Commission?
I will make that nomination to appoint Evan Nass.
Okay, is there a second? Seeing none.
I'll second it, so there's a vote.
Okay, Councilwoman Castellino?
Abstain.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
No.
Councilwoman Williams?
No.
Council President Mathieu Brown?
No.
Okay, let me just. Okay. I'm sorry. All right, the next nominee is Mr. Yazin. Is there a motion to appoint him to the Economic Development Commission?
So move.
Second.
Okay. Councilwoman Castellino.
I'm going to vote, yeah.
Okay. Councilwoman McCartney.
No.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
No.
Council President Mathieu Brown.
Yes.
So I believe he gets the seat, right? Yes.
Read it too, I think.
Yeah, so he is the nominee for the Economic Development Commission.
Thank you to all my council colleagues, and I know that that was uncomfortable, but certainly appreciate being able to move forward in this, in this space.
And Council President, I just want to add, because I'm still going to have a conversation with the mayor tomorrow, because I would like to see if we could add other appointments on. I hope the residents do attend the meeting. And, yeah, and I, this was very uncomfortable for me this evening. I was hoping that we would all agree to add the appointments on. So I was disappointed I didn't get a consideration.
I understand, and I'm sorry that you are disappointed. And, you know, if the mayor decides that that is something he wants to do, and he supports our expanding, I'm sure that we can do that once you have that conversation with him as well. Madam Clerk, what is next on our agenda?
It's, you're still under pending matters. I just want to let you know that I'll prepare the consensus appointment letter tomorrow for Mr. Yazin.
Okay, thank you. And pending matters, also, I just wanted to talk about how, or get a consensus, if you will, from the council members. How do you want to move forward in discussing the leaf blower ban? I will share that I have spoken to the Health Department, to Michael Fontino, as well as to Chief Abbott with respect to the enforcement of the ordinance. As we can all imagine, you know, with the number of landscapers in the community, enforcement would probably take more than one full-time job, and that's simply something that the Police Department isn't equipped to do at this time. The Chief did share with me an article from Summit, New Jersey, and what they are doing in moving forward. So last year, granted, they started a year before, but they had an ad hoc committee that met with residents as well as with local landscapers to be able to have that conversation and that dialogue. And the municipality itself during that time transitioned all of their equipment to electric blowers and a couple of other things that they fitted their public works trucks with. So I think that, for me personally speaking, I certainly want to have the voice of the landscapers or local landscapers to have that conversation, to have that consideration, and see how we take steps towards an eventual ban of the gas leaf blowers. But I want to have that conversation with the, I think it's only fair to have that conversation with the landscapers. Yes, Councilwoman McCartney.
Thank you. I think that's an excellent way of moving forward because, as I said, I think that there are parts of this, looking at the noise ordinance, I think that there is part, there are parts of this that we can address. I still think that there should be that educational component, and that would be helpful if we had an ad hoc committee to work with that. And I understand that our landscapers are registered, just like we just passed that ordinance to have our tree care experts registered with the township. Our landscapers are registered. They're giving a decal or something for them to be able to use the Environmental Center on Mount Pleasant Avenue. So there is a process. There is something in place now that I think we can work with that. And that it should be. The few that I spoke to said that they were not of commercial grade, but if there is more of a health-related issues that we need to discuss with them, I think we can work on transitioning. Like I said, not fall of 2021, but to transition in that direction.
I agree that fall of 2021 is right around the corner. And while some of us may be able to, you know, purchase electric blowers, you know, there are some who may have a challenge in doing so, particularly for their business.
And it would also be a municipality expense, too, because we have public parks and open space that has to be maintained. And I don't see how these rechargeable. You know, some of these, you know, we're talking about, when I said I have one, you know, I have a small lot. But, so when you have landscapers that are working on two acres or commercial properties, that's not going to work. So there has to be, we have to figure out how to do that.
So the Chief did, after he sent that article to me, which I'll forward to all of you to read, he did put us, he did connect me with their with their touch person for this. So if we decide that we're going to do an ad hoc committee, I'll circulate an email for us and figure out how they went about making that transition and just educating ourselves in that space. And I don't know if this is something the Environmental Commission wants to take a lead on.
Well, so when this was presented to us, when everyone was asked to have the Zoom meeting, that was my recommendation to have the people that proposed this come to the Environmental Commission, and they bypassed the Environmental Commission and came right to the council. So it was never discussed. I did have ordinances that we were, we don't meet till the end of the month. So this meeting, we meet next Wednesday. So this meeting came prior to that meeting. Maybe they didn't want to wait. I don't know. But I did, in my discussion, tell them about the other ordinances that I had so that we can compare and connect. And that didn't happen.
So is the Environmental Commission meeting on the 31st, on the 31st? I'd certainly like to join on that day, just to listen to the conversation. Councilwoman Williams.
Yeah, I would like to make sure if we move forward with trying to identify next steps, that we certainly do have representation from the business community. And while I do respect the opinion and the presentation that was provided earlier today from the representative from our Green West Orange, I think that we also should have some professionals, whether they be environmental specialists, as opposed to someone who is an advocate, but someone who is absolutely in this space and can provide more factual documentation and information about the impact, as well as, again, just representing the business community and the financial hardship that this mayor may not impose on our landscapers.
I think I agree with that, Councilwoman Williams. And I think one of the public commenters mentioned that the president, and I may have heard it wrong, but of the landscapers, is there a landscapers association? I'll do a Google after we're done to see if that is something that, you know, someone or an organization that we can tap into, to hear from them as well. So I'll do that.
I have that in my notes.
Oh, great.
I'll share that with you.
Council President.
Yes.
If I may, I just want to, because there were comments by members of the public about us using our current noise ordinance to, and enforce it with respect to leaf blowers and so forth. And I just want the council to be aware that as a practical matter and a legal matter, that's pretty difficult to do. The, there is a decibel limit in our noise ordinance that frankly is not enforceable because our ordinance is not approved by the state, and the state has basically preempted municipalities from dealing, from having their own noise ordinances based on decibels. They have to approve it, and basically if you don't follow their exact form, they won't approve it. To enforce a decibel noise ordinance, you have to buy a lot of equipment. And in a town like ours with 12, 13 square miles, you'd probably need a lot of equipment. It has to be calibrated every year. It has to be maintained. You have to have licensed, certified operators who are trained. I know that Mike Fonzino is trained in how to operate that equipment, but he's the only one, and we don't have any of that equipment. We'd have to buy it. So there's just a lot of practical problems here and some legal problems, technical legal problems. Noise ordinances are always hard to enforce. Noise is a subjective thing as well as an objective thing. And the police chief will tell you that it's good to have the nuisance type of ordinance that we have because when, for example, ABC licensees have noisy situations, which historically they've had plenty of in West Orange, and in some places, in some instances in neighborhoods that are, you know, where ABC licensees have premises that border residential neighborhoods. You need, you need to have some way of keeping the peace and keeping quiet at late hours and early morning hours. So with the nuisance type of ordinance that we have, the police can come and discourage the noise and hopefully be successful in toning it down. And if necessary, issuing summonses, which can be enforced in municipal court. But again, it's difficult to get convictions in municipal court on violations of a noise ordinance because somebody's noise is somebody else's music. It's a difficult situation. So I just want to point some of these things out. These are not easy issues. The decibel level ordinances that, or the statute that the state enforces and the state can enforce on our behalf when we call them in, and they do, are generally used for things like outdoor air conditioning equipment on commercial buildings, things like that, fans. And we, in fact, had that situation with Aaron's supermarket about a year ago, I think, and I was involved in that, which is why I know some of these things. So just, there's a lot of things to think about and talk about.
Thank you for that. I'm sorry, Councilman Rutherford is waited. Then Councilwoman McCartney.
So I am in support of moving in this direction, but like my colleagues here, I do want to emphasize, I think it's important to think it through, have a well-thought-out transition plan that does take into consideration residents that may have a difficult time just up in getting a new piece of equipment, as well as some of our smaller landscaping businesses. So I'm fully supportive of getting all of those voices to the table as we figure out how to move in that direction.
Councilwoman McCartney.
Yes, I wanted to ask Ken Kaiser, can, when I had, when I was talking about adjusting or amending our noise ordinance, I was really only looking at changing the times with so many people working from home. I was looking at where it says operating the leaf blower, chainsaw, parasol, power hedge trimmer, power lawnmower on weekdays between 7:30 and 7:00 p.m. If we shaved some time off of that during the week, eight to six, I think I was thinking along those terms.
Okay, and you can, and that's a valid, that's a valid line of thought, and I don't see any reason why we can't adjust hours. I mean, I think you can do that. You just, you just run into, you just run into problems when you deal with the decibel portion of our ordinance. It's just not enforceable.
Right. I remember that from Aaron's also. Saturdays presently, we have eight to five. If we looked at either nine to five or 10 to five even on a Saturday, and Sunday's the same. Just shortening the working hours.
I think that's certainly a great start with the ordinance. But, and I do want to have that discussion. I will attend the Environmental Commission meeting, just to I don't, do you have an agenda for Wednesday already?
No, we don't. And what I'm thinking, though, if we're talking about having, we will not have business owners there. So, you know, I feel like they are just going to agree with what we are saying right now, that it should be a collective conversation between business owners and an advocate. The name of that person that was mentioned was Nelson Lee. So that was that expert in the field. I would still like you, Council President, to speak to the people in Summit to see if they did have professionals and people on their committee that were able to speak. I can reach out to the Association of New Jersey Environmental Commissions to see if they have a position paper on this as well from Anjack. So, you know, I think that we can bring that all to the Environmental Commission, but I really think we need to start with that ad hoc committee about starting the conversation.
Okay, so I will reach out to them tomorrow and start that conversation and circle back with all of you to share what they have that conversation as to how to move forward.
Council President, I just want to jump in. I know you can't see me raising my hand.
Councilwoman Castellino, go ahead.
I didn't want to cut Councilwoman McCartney off.
I would follow up also with Anjack.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilwoman Castellino.
Yeah, thank you. And I know I spoke at length earlier in the evening, but, yeah, we definitely got to get the business owners involved with this. You know, I know they probably work Saturdays landscapers. I don't see many of them Sunday. I think Sunday's more of a residential issue, and we could cap some of the hours during the week. Landscapers tend to start earlier in the morning. So, but our ordinance at seven o'clock at night, don't forget, is also for the homeowner who works all day and tries to maintain their property, or else we're, you know, we're looking at other kind of issues. So, you know, with the noise, I just wanted to add, to piggyback off some of the comments that Mr. Kaiser made. You know, even now on the weekends, I mean, we all have to be mindful, learn how to talk to each other as neighbors. Past year, since folks have been home with the pandemic, even neighbors playing music in their backyards at loud decimals, the police come, and again, it's all hard to prove. So I echo a lot of Mr. Kaiser's comments. But as neighbors, if someone is, you know, go talk to your neighbor. Maybe they could get their landscaper to come another time of day, or even they could adjust some hours with their own landscaping. But we all just have to be mindful, and most landscapers are in and out. I know a lot of people are working from home, but, you know, we just, you know, we have to be patient, too. So I know it's tough. These are tough times, but it's really hard to enforce and to put also another burden on our health inspectors and our police department. So it's going to be, you know, I could see us crafting the time, so I'm glad there will be dialogue. But again, enforcement, too, is going to be hard as well. But it's something I think is all worth talking about and moving forward with.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to add those additional comments about the noise and just neighbors just trying to have dialogues with each other. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Castellino. And, you know, when we start talking about, you know, these new initiatives, I hear you in my head now. How are we going to enforce it? Who's going to do it? I certainly agree with you that we have to figure these things out. So we'll circle back, I'll circle back with all of you after I have the conversation with Summit and see where and how we proceed. Thank you very much for all of that input and to everyone who spoke. Is there anything on the councils?
Council President, the Pearl Media, the council was going to talk about whether or not they wanted to move forward.
Thank you. A couple of things, Councilwoman Williams, I see your hand.
Well, you were saying a couple of things. I was just going to make the recommendation that we have an RFP for the
Pearl Media.
Yeah, for Pearl, well, it wouldn't be an RFP for Pearl Media because they've already
For the, I'm sorry, yes.
It would be a RFP for the presentation. There would be a RFP for the presentation in light kind.
I think that, what I was gonna say is that I understand the willingness to bring in over some time, over $7 million, which is approximately three, a little under $300,000 a year. You know, we can always use any amount of money that we have. I'm just concerned about, and it's why I asked the mayor the first question, was what do you anticipate with the vision of seeing, you know, these signs advertised as? I am a little concerned about putting signs, you know, in suburban areas. You know, I'm not so opposed to them on, you know, signage for businesses or even, you know, on the highways. But I really, I wouldn't want to drive around to see a Verizon or a commercial down the street from where I am. So I know that some of the locations that were suggested were by the firehouses, all these firehouses are by residents' homes. I don't want to look out my window and see a commercial being advertised. That's my personal opinion. I'm not supportive of the administration having an RFQ, and it's a 25-year commitment. That's a long time. It's not even a pilot. And I understand completely why it wouldn't be a pilot, because they're investing, you know, over a million dollars in the project. I'm just not supportive of it. So I don't know how the rest of my council colleagues feel, but I just wanted to let you know that that's where I am on this.
Do you want me to take a roll call vote to see whether you want to move forward or not?
With an RFP, yes.
Right, with an RFP.
There's still no commitment. Even if we move forward with the RFP or an RFQ, there's still no commitment.
Right.
So wait, so, excuse me, before we, wait, we have a motion, so we just need somebody to second it, I guess.
No, there's no motion. I was just gonna do a roll call to see if the council wanted to move forward on the West Orange signage proposal.
I, I can't raise my hand, can I jump in? So I want to get some more information, because I do want to move forward to an extent I am. I am a little hesitant about where those signs are located and want to see what kind of adjustments could be made, or if any, or if we could just do the bus, you know, the jetties and the bus stops. And again, I wanted to see what flexibility, if there was any. I know they would like for us to have it all, but I'm a little hesitant where some of those signs were located. I had an issue with quite a few of them.
Council President?
Yes.
If I can, if I can make a suggestion. These are spots that were picked out by this particular group. Different firms may pick out different spots for your consideration. I think, you know, I think the mayor may have some particular spots that he thinks are advantageous, and some that he's concerned about as well. So I think, I think the council should express its general feelings about these types of things. Obviously, any particular sites individually we have of concern, to be expressed that to the administration. So as we go about the business of doing what we do, which is creating RFPs and getting them out there and finding out what the commercial interest will be, certainly your concerns individually and collectively will be taken into consideration, because at the end of the day, you guys got to vote for it. So I don't know that you can, at this point in time, debate the locations, you might, again, you might be able to say locations you definitely do not want, and express that to the administration, and then we'll move forward. Because there's an unlimited number of locations, right? So we kind of need to see what the market will bear. At the end of the day, if the market says we have to have locations that you're not prepared to have, then it will not move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you. I was, it makes me think that should this, should the Pedestrian Safety Commission weigh in on this? They are well-versed on the traffic conditions in town and different streets in town. And, and the way, it made me think of the OSPEC, too. When we did the ordinance on OSPEC, there was something about final approval on content. That was one of the questions that Councilwoman Castellino asked. So here, we're talking about the different sign location, but I think we also want to have some kind of control on the content if this should move forward as well. So there's a lot of questions. And like John said, you know, unless we have an RFQ, RFP, to find out what these businesses are, then I guess that's when we have that discussion.
Until we hear from the market, we're just, we're really fighting with shadows, because we don't, we don't know really what. We know what this particular group has come back and told us, and it's very valuable. And it's certainly got you focused on things you like and things you don't like. And again, I think that's important.
So I guess my, the other thing I have noticed, signage already on bus shelters in town. So that would be another-
We already do that, we already have a contract for that.
Right.
My view was, if we're gonna do this other, you want to lump that in to get the maximum bang for your buck. You know?
So when that contract expires, kind of thing, you mean, to take this over?
Well, it has expired.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
So then, why don't we do this? Can you, yes, can you do a roll call, Madam Clerk, for the RFP?
Yes, Councilwoman Castellino?
I'm gonna say yes right now.
Okay, Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yeah.
Council President Matute Brown?
No.
Did you say no?
No.
Okay. So four to one vote to move forward.
Sorry.
Correct. Is, Mr. Gross, will you let the mayor know that?
I will be happy to let the mayor.
Thank you, sir. I think that's all on the agenda.
On the agenda, do my council colleagues have anything, any new business that they wanted to bring to the council, or?
I would just like to, I'm sorry, Madam.
No, go ahead.
Council President. I just wanted to make the public aware, those who are still on our meeting, and those who may watch this at a later date, to congratulate Dr. David Jones, who has been appointed as the new Human Relations Commission Chairman. We wish him well. We know that he will continue to take that commission in an incredible direction. This is his work, profession and trade. So I'm just very excited to see how well the commission will do under his leadership, and congratulations to his appointment.
Thank you for that shout-out, Councilwoman Williams. That was a very exciting meeting. There's a lot of energy in that meeting. So I'm looking forward to it as well. Thank you for calling that out. And just a reminder for those who are on and those who will be watching, April 5th is our, and it's been publicly noticed, I've put it on social media, and so has the township, is our workshop, the council workshop on the subdivision for Rock Spring. So please, everyone, make sure that if you're interested, please join us. Public comment is permitted. No action will be taken by the council. This is just the administration presenting their ideas or their thoughts or their plans for a potential subdivision at Rock Spring. So we will be discussing that on the 5th. So make sure you mark your calendars, please.
Yes, and Council President, the Zoom instructions are on the website for that meeting.
Okay, great.
And the meeting starts at 5:00 p.m.
Yes, thank you so much. That's all for this evening. Thank you all for, oh, can we have a motion?
For a second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting is adjourned.
Wonderful.
Good night, everybody.
Everybody, good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Thank you, this is to inform you that when I end the meeting, it will end for those both on-screen and off-screen, and no other business will be conducted. Have a great night, everybody. See you next time.